Twenty-four as a draft. Accept and final project number two-two-zero-one-a. Reconstructing Sixth Street Southwest from Wilmer Avenue to Nineteenth Avenue. Accept and final project of number two-two-zero-one-c. Reconstruction and of Industrial Park Drive Service Road. United Community Action Partnership, UCAT preliminary and final plaits. Oslo Meadows First Edition Preliminary and Final Plats. And the accounts payable reports from eight-one-twenty-four to eight-fourteen-twenty-four. Also, for your information, we have director's reports, the finance report through seven-thirty-one-twenty-four, and the Wilmer Municipal Utilities financial reports for June of 2024.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Here we have a motion and a second discussion. Audrey.
Yes, I would like to pull items B, D, and H for just a couple of questions.
All right, anything else? Local.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Bryan.
Aye.
And Ost.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that passes. Audrey, the Police Civil Service Commission minutes, June seventh.
Yes, just a question. I knew we were looking for someone new because Mike Kubish had moved out of Wilmer, but he's still listed as the chair on the minutes. And so I don't know when he moved, but I'm just curious if if he's still functioning on that or if he's moved out of town.
No, he should not be moving.
Chief.
Chief.
Chief Felth was delayed on a call. He should be here this evening yet, but we can make sure to follow up with him.
Well, let's, when he comes, we'll address it.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, do you?
So then the next is the Planning Commission Minutes, largest seven.
Yes, I was questioning the Waltz conditional use permit. I know that it was passed, but it didn't have any details if the setback to the street was maintained as requested.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to answer your question, the setbacks for the Waltz parcel is aligned with the residential properties, so they're keeping the same setbacks.
Thank you.
Does that take care of that one?
Yeah.
Then we've got H, United Community Action Partnership, UCAT preliminary and final plaits.
Yes, I just wanted a question on the parking because I thought that they were getting their, that they could have parking on the street. But I know that we're further along. We're talking about across the street and limiting parking on Seventh Street. So I was curious if that had any effect on us approving this as it's in the packet.
It doesn't affect your approval of the United Community Action Partnership final plaits. The parking will be on site.
Okay, so they weren't planning to park on the street or have parking on the street?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. That takes care of that, so we need those, those. I guess just two of them.
Chief Felth is here now.
Oh, chief. You snuck in. A question about the Police Commission and Mike Kubish.
Yes.
Still listed? And he's living outside the city?
Yes, he's been replaced by Chris Rosenthal. Now, Chris was approved by the council. I don't remember dates, it was probably two months ago or a month ago. And then at our last Police Commission meeting, we had the formal switch over of Mike Kubish and Chris. So, once Mike had moved out in the county, the request was made. Chris had turned in an application. There was a delay in getting that approved through the council here. But, once that happened, then we made the official switch.
Have we acted on that?
Yes, yes. Yep, so the switch is, as a council, you approved Chris about a month ago. And then, so now, Mike is officially retired from the Police Commission and Chris is on there. So.
All right, thank you.
The minutes, I think, were from maybe February or something, or June.
June.
Okay, so then, the switch had not officially taken place yet, so.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now we need to.
Motion to approve B, D, and H.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve B, D, and H. Any discussion? Now, local.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ost.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. I have been informed by our city clerk, there is, no one signed up for the open forum, so we'll go to the public hearing, the 2024 assessment hearing. And I'll call on Jared Bogie, our city engineer.
Good evening, mayor and council. As mayor indicated, this is the final assessment hearing for the 2024 improvements, improvement projects. There, those projects are listed before you there. Three distinct areas, Tenth Street, the Thirteenth Grace and Rice area, and then Wilmer Avenue, identified there on the map. The purple color is reconstruction projects and the green is mill and overlays. So, two different types of projects in those three project areas. Summary of the costs associated with the 2024 program. Approximately 6.457 million in street, 1.4 million in sanitary sewer. Water main was approximately 1.7 million and storm sewer of approximately 2 million associated with those. The assessment rates, which is the topic here this evening, and the assessments levied to the benefiting properties. The assessment rate for street has been identified at $64 a foot. The sanitary sewer main reconstruction at $16.25. Sanitary sewer services are $820 each. The water main, $20.75. The water services, depending on their size classification, one inch smaller, at $1,035. The larger services are at $2,960. And then the storm sewer reconstruction at $14 per foot. Those rates are applicable to the reconstruction projects. The overlay project or the Wilmer Avenue project, similar to the 23rd Street area last year, these lots have been classified into three different categories, being small, medium, and large. Small lots range in width from zero to 60.9 feet, medium from 61 to 99.9. And then the large lots are greater than 100 feet. The corner lot, why that is noted there is because of the city's corner lot policy. And that is the cost assessed to the benefiting long side of the of the corner lot. By way of reference, these rates are within 3% to 8% of the rates levied last year as part of the 2023 improvements. Breakdown, as it relates to the assessments, is shown there. Private properties with approximately $2.25 million in private assessments. And then the city properties of approximately 117,000 for a total estimate of the assessments associated with the overall total project of $2,367,965. The assessment term is 15 years. The rate is 5.868%. And so, just by way of an easy calculation, for every $1,000 in assessment, that's approximately $102 in annual payment.
How does that assessment percentage compare to last year?
I do not recall the assessment percentage last year. I gotta believe it was a skosh lower. So the assessment payments, payment policy, this is a question that we get frequently as it relates to how do property owners pay a portion or all of the assessment? So, partial prepayments are allowed to the city clerk prior to October 31st, 2024, or the full amount of the assessment can be paid prior to October 31st, 2024. There will be no interest added in that period. So between November 1st and November 15th, payments can also be made to the city clerk, but interest will be added from the date of the bond sale, which is June 3rd. After November 15th, 2024, the 2025 payment would include interest from the bond sale through the end of the year. Following that, payments, including the interest, would be collected annually on property taxes. So there's the first half of the property tax and the second half, it would be split among them. And then, on the last item here that we run into a little bit sometimes. So, each year throughout the course of the assessment term, payments can be made. However, those need to go to the county auditor, not the city clerk. And the interest for the entire year will be added to the to the amount. So, few different dates to remember, but prior to August 31st, no interest. Partial prepayments or full payments. November 1st to the 15th will include the interest. And then after November 15th, there's interest, so. And with that, mayor, I will, that concludes my presentation. It is a public hearing. And following the close of the public hearing, there is a resolution enclosed in your packets this evening, so at this time you can open the public hearing.
All right, I'll do that. I've got a question for you. There are allowance, allowance, an allowance for deferment?
There is a provision in the assessment policy for deferments. And those individuals that are seeking a deferment can certainly contact City Hall and staff there will be able to look into that. There's some requirements associated with that, but those can be evaluated when they come into City Hall, so.
The deferment goes until they sell their property and the interest continues throughout the term?
Yes, their interest continues even though the assessment's deferred.
Yep. Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, after that explanation by our city engineer, I'll open the public hearing. Request that when you come up that you give your name and address. We have some letters that we will be reading after I close the public hearing. First off, I have Justin Mattern.
Evening, mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Justin Mattern at Thirteenth Street Southwest. My letter is probably one of the ones that you were going to read, so I'll spare you and take care of that for you. I'll go through that real quickly with some of the highlights, and then if there's any questions, perhaps we can walk through that as well. So, hopefully you'll have a copy of that as I invited a series of information along with this, so. Mayor Reese and members of council. I'm writing today in response to the proposed assessment on Thirteenth Street Southwest for the 2024 street reconstruction project. I want to first recognize the need for our street improvements and applaud the city and their recent efforts to replace and/or repair the road infrastructure within Wilmer. This includes the replacement and upgrades on the Thirteenth Street, Grace Avenue, and Rice Avenue project. As some of you know, for years I've been a proponent of changing how the city handles street assessments. Both personally and in my role as a former Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commissioner, I had met with various members of the council and city staff advocating for improved street planning and changes to the city assessment policy. My concerns include the following. Number one, city project cost offsets. This includes the share of project costs incurred by the municipal utilities per a previous MOU with the city and the utilities. Also, the share of the project costs covered by the local option sales tax for stormwater upgrades. And finally, the share of project costs that are supposed to be covered by the monthly utility improvement charges that are appended with each monthly wastewater bill. These combined funding sources are intended to reduce the total cost burden for street projects and thus have a direct impact on subsequent assessment amounts. See attached breakdown. Number two, assessment amounts larger than realized gains in property values per state statute. This has been a concern for a number of years now and has been publicly addressed in the West Central Tribune article published October 7th, 2022. See attached. The concern has been exacerbated by the recent housing bubble, which has already inflated home values further and further muted the effectual property value increase on homes as a result of street improvements. Number three, assessed estimates versus assessed project costs. Our assessment public hearing notice states that the total estimated cost of assessable improvements is $11.66 million, of which nearly 3.1 million is to be assessed. However, the total bids as provided in previous council packets for all 2024 street projects listed in the notice came in significantly lower at 9.26 million. See attached for breakdown. My understanding from preliminary communication with contracted city engineer is that the actual project costs have been pretty well aligned with the bid amounts. See attached. Further, I understand that the targeted, that the targeted assessed value for street projects is just over 20% of actual project costs due to the type of bonding that the city utilizes. In this case, the $3.1 million proposed assessment is roughly one-third of actual project costs. Following the currently intended city pattern, a more appropriate 22% assessment of the $9.26 million bid would be roughly $2 million. Number four, homeowners caught off guard. As I have spoken casually with some of my neighbors, I realize the shock that many citizens experience when they find out about their assessment amounts. While those of you on the council and in city work are exposed to these amounts year after year, most people in the community are not. Due to these concerns, I'm requesting the following changes to be considered. Firstly, as a direct consequence of concerns one, two, and three, I'm asking for a 33% reduction in my assessment amount and the assessment of those who have signed on to this notice. See attached addendums. Secondly, in light of these concerns, I would ask the city to further pursue options to reduce, although not eliminate, these assessments in the future and to help spread the burden in a more palatable fashion. For example, further utilizing something like the utility improvement charge to raise a larger pot of funds from everyone each year could go towards street projects with the sole purpose of reducing the sudden impact of such a large cost to property owners each time a street is repaired. I recognize additional options can and should be considered, and while some discussion had taken place this spring during a council work session, no serious conversation or brainstorming of such options has ensued. As always, I welcome further conversation with any of you should you wish to reach out. Finally, although I have not gone door-to-door canvassing my neighborhood, I have had typical end-of-driveway and across-the-fence conversation with some of my neighbors. These neighbors share my concerns and thusly have chosen to sign on an agreement to the terms of this letter and as an official notice of objection to their own assessments. See addendums one, two, and three. So with that, if there are any questions, I would entertain those. I know there is a lot of information I have provided in the packets too, so I'm hoping it didn't overwhelm you all too much. Now, thank you.
All right, thank you for your input, Justin. Dennis Schafbauer.
Good evening, Mayor Reese and Wilmer City Council members. My name is Dennis Schafbauer and I reside at 1436 Grace Avenue Southwest. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am here to object to the dollar amount assessed to my property for the 2024 street improvement project. I believe that the assessment is excessive and does not accurately reflect the value added to my property. Thank you.
John Pierce.
My name is, my name is Don Pierce, 913 Rice Avenue. I'm here to object to the amount of the assessments, too. We were not given these numbers in advance, and these estimates just seem way higher than what we were anticipated when I had talked to people on Sixth Street last year. I'm not sure how these numbers got so inflated from last year.
All right, thank you. Donna Isley.
Greetings, council members. My name is Donna Isley and I reside at 1,014 Street Southwest, which is a corner lot. So, Grace Avenue runs along the north side of my house. I guess I question also the assessment policy with regard to the streets and the street repair. I certainly am not, don't object to any of this being done, but in my particular case, I have already been assessed almost $8,000 for the front side of my house, which is 14th Street. And now I'm being assessed $9,700 for the Grace Avenue side. And I'm not sure, and my main gain on the north side on Grace Avenue is curb and gutter, which is is fine, but I don't know how much lat will actually increase the value of my property. So, I was wondering if you could reconsider that amount?
All right, thank you, Donna. Wayne Kitzman.
I got no comment at this time. I think my question's ready.
Okay. Kathy Bannon.
Hello, I'm Kathy Bannon. I live at 1208 Grace Avenue Southwest. I'm not happy with the amount that was assessed to my home either. I think on your, at least on the letter that I had received, it says Kathy Muldrick. That was my former name at the time that I bought the house. And I bought my house in 1998, when my sons were one and two and a half years old. At that time, Grace Avenue was a beautiful, tree-lined, family-friendly home, neighborhood. I was able to pay off my house in 2019, after my husband died, and I put on a new roof. And that's about where my improvements to my home have stopped. I live modestly. I drive my parents' 2000 Avalon. Don't make any big purchases, but my sons remind me that I do not have enough money to retire. Something that I had looked forward to doing, sixty-seven in October, and I work full-time for the school district at Kennedy School. I don't have money, unless I did intend to retire the monies. I do not want to do that, to replace my windows in my bedrooms. So when I need to close or open my windows, I go outside to do it. I guess, you know, I'm not talking so much about these parcels and the monies, but these are things. This is something I have lived in, coming back to Wilmer, to have raised my children here. Lived in this home since 1998. And I just don't see how stripping away the beauty of this street, how that increases the value of my property. Now, I understand that that had to happen for those, for the work that was done, but that certainly didn't raise its value in any way. Those trees were a big part of which drew people to Grace Avenue. And, and also, when I bought my house, my house had been built in either 1950 or 1952, it is that many years older now. And I've grown to live with it. But, it seems just so, it's distressing to think that I'll have to keep working to pay up a value that may or may not be seen and may or may not be able to get those windows replaced. And by the way, since they shut the water off Monday in July, my bathroom sink water hasn't worked, so that's my last part. But, I just hope that you would take into consideration the values that are being assessed on these properties, our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mike Docobacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm on 1104 Grace Avenue, just down from Kathy. We purchased our home five, six years ago when Grace Avenue was pretty much still in disrepair. The gravel that's on it right now might be the best that road has been in the entire time I've lived there. The road's condition wasn't one of the reasons we bought our house. Part of the thing that made us fall in love and buy the house was the way Grace Avenue looked, the tree-covered area, the, the shade for our young family. And that is gone, just like Kathy pointed out, we had to have that, but I would argue that that has made more of a detriment to the value of my home than a brand-new Grace Avenue road is. And like most of the people, I think, I don't have the $11,000 to pay this outright, to spare myself the interest rates. So, if this is financed over the 15 years that is being allowed at the interest rate, I'm gonna end up paying the city $17,000, a $5,800 extra cost on top of the $11,000 that is being assessed. So that is just part of, I think, the concern I wanted to bring to the council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. That's everybody that signed up to speak. I will call on Vernay Larson, our city clerk. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll take her first.
Sign, sign in there, please, with your address.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Reese. I also live on Grace Avenue at 1201 Grace Avenue, right across from Kathy, right down the street from Mike. I would like to dispute the amount that has been assessed on the property as well due to, is this really going to increase the value of my home?
What's your name?
Oh, Jelaine Gosar. I'm sorry. Jelaine, yes, yeah. But in addition to that, what I'd like to talk to the council about, not only the, the value and the assessment, Kathy and I are both single women. Our street has been shut down for several months. Trying to get softeners out, groceries, things like that have been really difficult for us. They, I got stuck on our street. I had to call a tow truck, had to wash my van twice, had to bring it to the repair shop because there was so much mud in there. The construction company says, yes, you can drive on it. No, you can't. We just are back and forth, trying to find wagons to haul our things. You know, I'm cutting through two backyards, which is not ideal because it's not a smooth surface. And so it has been very difficult for us. This project has gone on for a long time. They started in April with the Center Point Energy. They started in April with the Center Point Energy. We received a notification, what, probably a month ago, saying that they're gonna start in the curb and gutter. Nothing has been done. They didn't fill in, when they did the temporary, they didn't fill in, um, the entire piece of my driveway and I was not home at the time. Someone got hung up on it, had some damage to their vehicle because there was just cement and then a drop-off. Getting out of my driveway right now has been very difficult and I don't know if I take up these concerns with you or not, but I know the city reviews, the proposals and the construction company, but we have not seen any action on our street for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Emily Strike. I live at eleven oh six Wilmer Avenue Southwest and I am also here to express my objection to the proposed assessment. The proposed cost for our parcel is four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and I feel this does not correlate to any type of special benefit we would have received as a property owner to our property. We had a replacement of our driveway apron and the sidewalk in front of it. Prior to this replacement, the, both were functional. We had not had any issues with it, did not, you know, request this repair. And I do not feel that this increases the value of our property by the nearly five thousand dollars. And again, I don't feel that there is a, uh, any special benefit that we have received from this. And I also have attached to my letter some tax information. My property has been steadily increasing in value over the past five years without any of these, you know, improvements occurring. And as such, my property taxes also steadily increased. So this, you know, additional cost on top is a, a financial strain. I oppose the cost of this additional assessment as it does not provide me with special benefits or an increase in market property value. I do not consider this assessment to be one that would increase the value of my home to a buyer. Thank you.
Emily, what was your address?
Eleven oh six Wilmer Avenue Southwest.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna speak?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. City Council, I appreciate what you've done for the city. It's, uh, I know it's a tough job, but it's, we appreciate all the work that you're doing. My name is John Magnusson. I live at seven twelve Thirteenth Street Southwest. I'm, when I opened the letter and showed that, uh, our property was assessed at sixteen thousand three hundred or whatever it was, I almost fell off the chair. And I'm thinking to myself, I just got the sheet of our proposed taxes for two thousand twenty-four. There it is, increased our proposed, uh, revenue of our house of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I don't think that, uh, it's possible to put the sixteen thousand dollars on or above that, that amount. I, I don't, I don't see where my house is gonna be worth three hundred and forty-one thou, uh, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars after the assessment. So I'm, I'm, I'm not agreeing with the total amount of, of, uh, assessment. I'm sure that there's gotta be some other way. The, the thing that bothers me is that from Candy High Avenue to Montegalia Avenue, it's one full block. We live on the west side of that street. The east side is all school. They pay no taxes. So my, the thing that bothers me is, are we kind of absorbing the taxes that the school would, for the work that was done on the school? If that's the case, then I think we better sit down and take a better look at the situation. I understand that the school is, is forfeiting from any taxes, but that doesn't mean that the homeowners should absorb that. And I, 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 I looked at, if I took it, this amount out on payments for the amount of whatever we could go, fifteen years or whatever. I'm eighty-eight years old. I'd be a hundred and four years old by the time the thing would be done. I don't think, unless we got a real miracle, that I will make it to that age. So, uh, I'm sure that the house will be sold prior to that and then, of course, everything can be taken care of, but I don't think that's right. And I really object to the sixteen thousand. I think that you should probably take a look at it and kind of reevaluate this, this whole situation. It just doesn't make sense. And I appreciate you giving me the time to speak about this. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Blake Foschville. I live at seven hundred and thirty Thirteenth Street Southwest. I may be less prepared than some other people. I wasn't originally gonna speak, but I also share a property, uh, with the school on the other side of the street. The side of my house that is on Thirteenth Street, I don't know exactly how many feet it is, but it can't be more than probably twenty-five or thirty feet. And I was assessed almost eight thousand dollars. I'm a single parent of two kids and, uh, live paycheck to paycheck as it is and, uh, at a time when we're all facing inflation, I can't, uh, you know, make that eight thousand dollar payment. And, uh, some of my only options really to put around property taxes and I can't, I can't afford much more on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Did you sign in? No. Please do sign in and put your address down. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm John Saunders. I'm at twelve twenty Grace. I also have a property at eight twenty Thirteenth Street. And, uh, I think Justin Mattern raised some great issues. Um, I, I hope it would be, and I understand what the law says. The law says if you don't object, you don't get the benefit of it, but I think some of the issues he raised could affect everyone on our project. I just wanna verify that those people who signed, who signed the form that Justin provided us have made a formal objection. I'd wanna hear from the city council that, uh, we haven't, so, because I know we can orally do that at this meeting, but I would want the people that signed on to be, uh, recognized as making a formal objection. I feel bad for those who aren't. I think Justin made some good points. It doesn't appear that those are discussed at this point. I wouldn't want somebody to lose their rights, uh, to get the benefit of that just because they weren't able to come tonight or didn't sign on for Justin. Justin was not carrying a torch. He was honestly just talking to people in the neighborhood and wasn't able to reach everyone. So, um, obviously I understand that, uh, projects need to be, um, completed, but they need to be based on the actual costs that the city has. And, uh, they also, uh, obviously have to provide a benefit to those properties. So I wanna make sure, um, and I, I feel selfish in being the one that says I'm objecting. I hope everyone that signed on with Justin, uh, is certified as an objector. And then if there is issues with the difference between the assessment and what was actually incurred by the city, um, if the law would allow, I'd certainly want that to be given to my neighbors who weren't able to talk to Justin or weren't able to submit an objection tonight. And the law's gonna provide what we can do with that, but, uh, I feel bad about that. I'm here to, uh, support somebody that took the effort and the time that I wasn't able to do to kind of analyze this. So I appreciate his work and it was done with the best intent of the city in mind. So I wanted to, uh, mention that to the council and I'll sign in here. So, uh, I'd wanna know before we left and before we adjourn tonight that, uh, the objections stated on Justin's letter are sufficient under the law to be a, a formal objection. So I'd ask that that happened before we, uh, adjourn tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Robert, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, uh, anyone who signed the letter communicating the objections, uh, to the assessments on, uh, the Grace Avenue and related streets projects as articulated by Mr. Mattern earlier is considered to have objected for purposes of the statute.
Hello, everybody. My name's Eric Kinder. I live at twelve fourteen Wilmer Ave Southeast. I'm a simple guy. I work a lot. I don't, I don't dabble in politics. I don't really watch the news or read the paper. So I didn't even get it, I don't even, I didn't even get a, a letter in the mail for this stuff. I know it was sent out, I didn't see it. Obviously saw the, the payment. I think there's a lot of people here that are pretty upset by this and I get you guys work hard and, and you're doing the best, maybe I understand that, but I think this might be a situation where we reevaluate and make sure that every single person has a voice in this decision and hopefully we can come to a resolution where I put anybody out. It's a lot of money, so, but yeah, that's all I got.
Hey, thank you.
My name is John Kennedy. Live at twelve ten Wilmer Avenue Southeast and I also object to the special assessment. I agree with, uh, really appreciative of Justin's assessment. I did talk to an employee at Bolton Bank earlier today about the assessment and the value and the stuff presented here was different than what I was given. So I find it odd that we're, the difference in the letter that everybody's talking about and what was presented. I would agree. I hope everybody, uh, is able to get the additional reduction in funds that we're shown here and not just move forward. Let's see. Uh, also, um, I don't fully understand why Wilmer Avenue, the street I live on, uh, was chosen, uh, from an proven standpoint. The road was perfectly fine. There were no potholes. It seems like a big waste of city resources and our own resources, uh, to fix a road that didn't need to be repaired. So, yeah, I just wanna voice my objection as well.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Let's go to the letters before I close the hearing.
All right. First letter is from Chan, I'm, I'm gonna not pronounce these names correctly and I apologize, um, from Chan Wang and Rachel Smelavich. To whom it may concern, we appeal the assessments for project numbers two four zero one dash A, two four zero one dash B, two four zero three dash A, two four zero four dash A and two four zero four dash B, up to one twenty-four oh eight and twenty, twenty twenty-four Street and other improvements on parcel number nine five dash six hundred dash zero five five zero. The only work that was done was on the handicap ramp on the sidewalk and digging around the ramp has caused additional work for the homeowners for grass repair and cleanup. The next letter, dear mayor Doug Reese, city clerk Vernay Larson, I hereby submit my written objection to the special assessments that are being proposed against my private property, parcel number ninety-five dash zero eight zero dash zero zero eight zero. I, for whatever reason, never received my mail notice of hearing on assessments for the assessments on my property. It was not until I heard a few other residents of the project had received notices that I took it upon myself to reach out to the city about my notice. I reached out this morning to go to the city and found that indeed the notices had been mailed and that I, that the public hearing was set for tonight. I requested the, to see the proposed assessment roll for the project through email, but was instead sent to a cost breakdown for my assessment. The public notice indicates the proposed assessment roll is on file with the clerk and open to the public inspection. However, upon stopping into the city office, I was denied access to the assessment roll and I was told I needed to file a request for information and it would be, needed to be approved. This assessment roll should be open. I object to the assessment for a number of reasons. I do not feel that the proposed assessment passes the special benefit test. The land received a special benefit from the improvement or that the land assessment does not exceed the special benefit measured by the increase in market value due to the improvement. Current tax data indicated that the land value for my property is estimated at thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. I would not agree with that current assessments increase my value, my value by over fifty percent. I would fight that the property currently receives water and sewer service is not receiving any additional special benefit because it continues to receive water and sewer service. I do not feel that my property lot length footage is calculated appropriately to reflect actual quantities used on the project. There is currently a meter fee and more commonly referred to as a base fee associated with both the water and sewer bill in the city. These fees typically are collected for operation, maintenance and replacement. Why is it not the case for the city of Wilmer? Water and sewer service charges would be appropriate to do as special assessments. Water and sewer mains should not. I would also argue against this assessment policy as being unfairly levied against the unfortunate property owner that is living there during the construction project. I would assume the city roads are constructed around every sixty years. Average homeowner in the U.S. is around eleven years. My first-time home buyers relocating, with first-time home buyers relocating in four to five years. I do not want this letter to be taken as I am not in support of the street project or the council continues, continued push to utility replacement or street maintenance or construction in the future. I do, however, strongly object to the council assessment policy and using special assessments as a tool solely to satisfy the twenty percent assessment requirements for the bonds. Best regard, Josh Johnson, P.E., living at fourteen fifty-nine Grace Avenue Southwest. The next letter, uh, is directed to me, attention Vernay Larson, city clerk. And then to whom it may concern, please accept this letter as my official objection to the notice sent out July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I will not be paying the assessment of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. I was not made aware of this policy change and don't feel this is right that I must pay for it. I never had to pay for the road when it was initially put in and I will not be paying for this as well. If I end up incurring this cost, I will send, be sending bills to the city of Wilmer for the extra three or four feet I have to snow blow because the plow doesn't seem to want to do it. Signed, Josh Kowalski, well, Kowal, Kowal, Kowalcheck? I, I'm sorry if I made that. Lives at one two zero one Ninth Street Southeast. The next letter is from Cindy Johnson and she's objecting to property nine five dash two seven zero dash zero zero one zero, assessment proposed proposal. I'm aware that you don't really care about me or what I have to say, but I feel the need to voice my objection to this proposal. You seem to think I need a new approach to my driveway. I had a tar approach. You tore it out and are putting in concrete one. The amount that you are charging me for this repair, which I didn't need or want, is excessive. I called some cement contractors. They all gave me estimates less than this for the six by fourteen-foot approach. I could have hired this done myself for half of what you are charging me for this repair. See attached, which is estimates from, uh, handwritten estimates of what it would cost her. The Minnesota statute says a special assessment amount cannot exceed the amount by which the property benefits from the improvement. I have yet to see how replacing a tar approach with a cement one benefits my property at all. Tar melts the ice and snow better than the cement does. You could have done a tar overlay instead of tearing it all out and putting in cement. It would, this would have been much cheaper. Your letter says that I have until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to pay this assessment amount or I will be charged five point eight six eight percent interest for a twelve-month period. So I have to pay twelve months of interest when I, when you haven't even given me a year to pay it. Then you say I ha, I can put it on my property tax for over a fifteen-year period with interest. I did some figuring and after twenty years, I would still owe money on this and I would have paid you one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents in interest. Now I ask myself, where does that interest go? Does it go to the city, the county, a Now I ask myself, where does that interest go? Does it go to the city, the county, a bank, a credit union? Where? Is it necessary for you to charge this 5.868 interest? You state in the other letter, the project costs $11,665,000, which you are paying $8,582,300. I assume you are paying your portion with the bond. I would like to ask if you were over budget on this project, why did you go ahead with all of these repairs? Could you have maybe just done why sidewalk and curb and not done approaches? Would that have saved some money? I am guessing I guess I'm old and you don't spend money you don't have. I just dropped you just dropped a $3,882,700. Three. I'm sorry, let me start over. You've just dropped a $3,882,700 debt into our laps and demand that we will pay for your overspending. I'd like to take to talk about property taxes. My property taxes went up 25% from 23 to 24 with no improvement to my property at all. They have almost doubled in the last four years. My house is very small, 30 by 40, including the garage. If I put this on my taxes, it will add $230 the first year to my taxes. A 15% increase. And can you tell me, will this be considered as maintenance, or will it be this is all I have to say? Thank you for your time. Cindy Johnson, and she lives at 1029 Wilmer Ave Southwest. The next letter is from Darren Kotzamacher. He lives at 826 13th Street Southwest, parcel number 95-570-80840. I am writing to request your consideration in adjustment to my current assessment to a lesser amount due to my financial hardship. Since 2003, I have been receiving social security benefits as a result of a traumatic brain injury that has led to my diminished capacity. Despite my efforts to contribute through part-time work as a delivery driver, I my income remains substantially below the poverty line. I am fortunate to receive family help for the maintenance and physical management of having home that allows me to live independently. I appreciate your consideration of my request to adjust the assessment amount to better reflect my financial situation. Thank you for your consideration. Diane Darren Kotzamacher, also signed by his mother Pam Kotzamacher, who is his authorized representative, P.E. The last letter I have is written by John or how I'm sorry, Ronald Johnson and Michelle Johnson, living at 1401 Wilmer Ave Southwest, parcel number 95-060-0010. This is a written objection to the amount of $6,500, which we see as being too high in view of the fact that our property is not getting a new driveway apron. Our lot size is 100 feet wide. We called and had the apron examined by Jeremy Pfeiffer, Assistant Engineer. In 2020, we called the city's Department of Public Works, and were told that it would be our responsibility to pay for a new apron. We paid a private contractor to do a new apron because the old ass the old original asphalt between sidewalk and curb was breaking down. This was not done correctly, and so in two parts. The replacement concrete portion was done at only four inches thick as opposed to what is being done now at six inches thick. So the part replaced was in no respect comparable in size or quality to the to these presently being done. Therefore, it seems that our higher assessment cost is not comparable with some other properties on Wilmer Ave. I ask that the assessment amount be reduced. Thank you. Sincerely, Ron and Michelle Johnson. That's all I have.
End of the letters. Jared, I'm gonna I'm gonna ask you a question just on that last one on Wilmer Ave. We aren't putting in six inches of concrete, are we?
The driveway replacement, the aprons that have been referred to this evening are six inches thick. Yes, that's standard for both the city and the county processes.
You did mine last year. I didn't think it was six inches. It was. Wow. Okay, that's substantial. I I listened to the public in this public hearing. And before I close the hearing, I just want to say something. And I I have sat at this table for 26 years. And over those 26 years, there have been years where there's been no projects. And there's been years that there's been limited projects, and we fell the city severely behind on reconstruction and maintaining our public streets. We we didn't do it. We were really poor at that. We fell behind, and we need to address these deteriorating streets, and we must be diligent in reconstruction of infrastructure. I would charge our city council, and I'm just gonna speak to you for a minute, and our staff. Tom, I want you to worry. I talked to you about this. And I think we need it's time that we, the council, the mayor, and staff, look at a program that will eliminate assessments. How do you do that? Everybody in the city pays every year an amount determined in a fashion that is fair and equitable for everyone. How I how that is formed, I don't know. I think you need to do some real figures and calculations and considerations and take Tim Dustin Mattern's letter in consideration of some of the things that he brought up. So I I would charge the council with the work to be done of looking at an overall financing of street projects, infrastructure across all properties that are taxable in our city. So I will leave it at that. Okay, Audrey. Well, let me close the hearing.
That's what I want to, before you close it.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to ask a procedural question because I know we ran into this a couple of years ago. And in Justin's letter, and as it was tonight, if we close the public hearing, there are questions about our figures that were in there. And if if those if any of those questions, I know he's done his homework with that. I think that we, before we close the public hearing, need to make sure that what we have or answer the questions that were in there. Because if we close it, it will, if I understand correctly, only apply to the people who objected to the public hearing tonight, where if we've got some errors in calculations, it should apply to all. And so I'm asking a procedural question with how do we do this? If we have questions that were brought forward to us regarding the the figures.
City Attorney, Robert Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Under the statute, the council has an obligation to pass upon each objection that has been made to you, whether orally at the hearing tonight or in our letter that was read into the record. You can do that tonight at this hearing and go property by property, but that's the requirement under statute. You also have the ability to continue the hearing with respect to those properties if you want more information before you make your determination. However, you, as I think we did years ago, have the ability as a council to make across-the-board changes to the assessment roles up until the point you approve the assessment. So that has not happened yet. That's one of the action items recommended tonight is that you approve the assessment role. So your options as a council tonight would be to approve the role after resolving each of the objections, to approve the role subject to a continued hearing just on those who have valid the or to, I guess, not take action on that until you have decided whether you wanted to make any uniform adjustments to any of the assessments, whether they objected or not. You do have that authority.
All right, Justin?
I think I'd like to hear from city staff of whether or not our figures are correct. That seems to be the big question tonight. And before I think we could really move on to much else, I think we have to to hear more about that. I don't know if that's Jared or if that's.
Related to the figures, I guess specifically, I know there are a lot of questions that were asked. As it relates to the the assessment amounts per the policy, I'm not concerned about those. But if it's the other figures that we're referring to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Participation and some of the other items that were mentioned in that by Mr. Mattern, I I don't have that information in front of me. But as it relates to the assessments, we have taken notes. We'll go through all of these, whether it's tonight if council chooses or like occurred last year, where each specific property is researched and validated. But I'm not concerned with incorrect figures in the assessment roles.
The overall total seems to be what's in question, right?
The, yes, thank you for that. That's so the overall total for 2024 is 100% correct is $11,665,000. The private property assessment amount is $2,367,000. Now, that might be off by a couple of thousand dollars, but that's just related to a sewer service that we found was not installed as of like 4 o'clock today. So we're going to recommend that that amount be changed in the assessment role. Because that's where the contractor was digging, and that's how we were able to to verify that. Certainly, moving forward, if we become aware of that after the role is adopted, whenever that might be, those adjustments would then also be made to those property owners. But in terms of the the private assessments, it's approximately 2.36 million. The notice that went out did say 3 million. And that was in error as it related to some assessments along the Wilmer Ave originally. That number originated from a cost per linear foot rather than the three property classifications, but significantly reduced the overall assessment. So 2.36 million is the private versus the 3 million that was in the in the notice.
Any other comments in response to to item three, Mr. Mattern's letter? The assessed estimates versus the assessed project costs?
I did review Mr. Mattern's letter. He was definitely very thorough. The items that were identified in terms of costs, not all of those included the total project costs. Some of those were only construction costs, which is a different thing because to that is added the admin, the bonding costs, the testing, engineering, and those other costs. So we can certainly certainly clear that up with the as-bid budget prices. But there were a couple in there that I didn't know that did not include all of the costs associated with the project, rather only the construction bid prices. So.
All right, Tom?
Well, just following up on Nelson's procedural, two years ago, same thing happened here. We had a lot of people here. A lot of people didn't speak up. We were going to continue the meeting at the next one, so everybody could get their figures together and come back and redo it. Meeting came up, and it was closed. Nothing was going on. We met downstairs. We had a whole house. It was packed in there. And I made the motion to get it opened back up, and Councilor Austin seconded that. Mayor at that time objected. They wanted to do it. We promised we were going to keep it open, open for everybody because there's a lot of people here that didn't speak tonight that should have come up and spoke concerning their taxes. There's people here sitting here having their or their assessment. So I I think we have to do what's what's fair that we did two years ago. Keep this meeting open so we can really look at at the numbers. I think they're a little high, just like what Don Pierce brought up two years ago with Sixth Street. They were high. We, as a council, sat down, readjusted figures, did what we could to benefit everybody. Right now, inflation's killing everybody. We just passed, I wasn't here the other week, we just passed, you know, the gas franchise, and that's going to be added on everybody. And we have to do something about taxes, but we also have to do something about the road. I hope you guys understand. Everybody's going through this, no matter what. When we do a a road construction, prices are going up and up and up. City needs help from, you know, the special assessments to get it done, and we'll try and get it done as fair as we can for everybody. That's my goal here is to want to keep it open and let everybody, you know, till we figure out what we can do. Because I looked at some of the corner lots, $8,000, and got a gal here on Grace that her last side was $9,700. Now we're charging 100% on on both sides of corn logs. The way I took it from that one, I don't know where a corner lot policy is, but that's, you know, $17,000 she's paying for two roads. I think that's unfair. So I think we need to keep this open and not not close.
Yes.
I received a letter from another person on Wilmer Ave, and it was brought up with some of the concerns tonight on the on the timing. Could you explain again why there's a short window of when they get the letter and then when it has to be paid? And is there any way that that can go out earlier? And or why is it that they get in in August, at the end of August? And then when it's due?
So in terms of the timing, the city needs to certify the assessments to the county auditor in November to make sure that they're in in time enough to be on the 2025 tax rolls for anybody that did not pay the assessments. The the notice letters, last year, I believe it was the end of September that they went out, council asked for it to be earlier. We had we were here in July and scheduled the public hearing for tonight. So certainly, staff is more than willing to send them out at whatever timeline the council would like.
Okay, so we're already a month earlier than last year?
Correct.
Okay. And is there is is there a percentage of the project that has to get done before we know which figure is going to get assessed? Or what what determines when we're going to see those totals and when the assessment figures come in?
So the assessment work starts as soon as we get the bids associated with the improvements. The discussion that we've had previously as it relates to when's the right time to send the notices. As we've heard, 13th Grayson Rice is in the midst of a long construction. I would say approximately one third of that project remains to be completed. It's in various stages throughout the entire area. As early as this afternoon, we were installing some sanitary sewer and and found out that one of the residents didn't have a sewer service there. Now, we have ways of fixing that because we track all this, and we go back and verify that after the construction is over. But ultimately, there's no perfect time. The the farther into construction you get, the more accurate we can project where the project's going to come in. They're all coming in on budget, I believe, as Mr. Mattern stated in our conversation previously. So I don't have any concerns with that. But there are little nuances that come up during construction that might not get a get accounted for. But in terms of timeline, we can we can accelerate that if that's the desire of the council.
I'm just saying, so say like with this, you find a new pipe or a new something that has to be fixed, that adjusts the amount?
Yes, because individual properties are assessed for sewer and water services as as well as sanitary sewer and water main. If their service comes off of one street If their service comes off of one street and not another, that can impact the assessment. Because then they would either need to be assessed, that's the hard part, right? So if it's not in the role and they're not assessed, we can't send them an additional bill. But in cases where if it's assessed and it and it isn't installed, we can, we can work with county on that adjustment. But tho- those are the risks. I mean, aside from that, we can accelerate the timeline.
Okay. And did we give people the information if they have a hardship and what they can do?
I believe that was in the notice, I'd have to double check that.
Okay.
Ricky?
I have a couple of questions. So with notifying them of their amount, since we usually know a year or two ahead, can we send out a notice like with an estimate of what they might owe a year ahead so they can save up for it?
So we actually don't know the assessment amounts till we get the bids, which is typically, well, we've been been running in about February, March timeframe when we've been taking bids in. But certainly, as council evaluates future projects, we could send a we could send an estimate based on previous year's numbers to the people or to the residents, property owners. If if we think that would be helpful, sure.
And then for Wilmer Avenue, you know, they were saying the street is already in pretty good shape. But that one's a mill and overlay, correct?
Yeah, the Wilmer Avenue Improvement is a mill and overlay project, very similar to the 23rd Street that we did last year. It is not a reconstruct, and that is that is why not all the curb and gutter and not all of the driveway aprons are being replaced. There's spot repair of sidewalks, spot repair of curbs, spot repair of driveway aprons. And that is due to the nature of the improvement that it is not a reconstruct. So that's why you see areas throughout the project that are have new concrete and some areas still don't.
But this should save money in the long run, correct?
The mill and overlay will extend the life of that road, absolutely.
Thank you.
And there were some catchphrases that were.
Yep, and there are storm sweater structures that were adjusted.
That's the city, right?
Yeah, there is a lot of failing infrastructure. Yeah.
Okay. Mike?
You and I have talked about this before, and I think we should share the debt somehow. Whether it's a wheel tax or whatever it is, I've been part of discussions with other communities, other government agencies. They do it a little bit differently than we do. And I think you had all these people that are here that are driving these roads. Why should these people be taxed for a road by themselves? But everybody's going to be probably driving on that road. We have to share the debt somehow. And and I think one of the ways is what we saw and we met with the county unit was wheel tax. I don't know how that works, but I'm just saying if it's if it's possible, let's look at it. I I just don't see why, because you live on a block, you get you get hammered for $16,000 or $8,000 or whatever it is. I think everybody drives on these roads. Everybody should pay.
Hey, Julie?
I thought when we had this discussion, two or three years ago, and we were looking at just exactly what you had said we should address here, that it was, and I don't remember the amount, but it was a significant increase. Am I like 12%? I told the 14%. It was, it was significant that each homeowner would have an increase. And and when we looked at, and then those that maybe had had an assessment within the last 15 years that would have to get prorated, you know, if they they'd already paid for their assessment on their road. And then at 15 years, everybody would be caught up because those that had just paid, then, you know, would would depend on the year how it would get prorated. But it would be significant to every taxpayer. And we just, I I think we knew that would not be palatable. And I I just, I just want you to know, we looked at it, we considered it, we looked at the figures. And and I'm, I'm, I just, I wish there was an easy answer, I do. And I, and as outraged as you probably felt when you got the letter about your assessments, if you got the letter that said that everybody, now we were going to start to do it the way where everybody gets charged, I think the outrage would be unbelievable if we were to do that to this. There's not an easy answer. How to prepare the roads and the cost?
There's got to be a way to to do this that's makes more sense. And eliminates the stomach acid that I'm feeling here tonight.
Could we just have the city staff fill people in exactly what's needed for the deferral? You know, with the letters that got brought up at the, since I can't pay another young gentleman, I think it was Ross Fold, single parent. You know, can we address that part so people can understand what they would have to do to defer it?
I know if you're elderly, so age or military deployment, there is a special assess or a special hardship request. And that is by at the city, at the city council's discretion, at the council's discretion. There's basically only like four different types of deferments you can get. If you are approved, your property is still gaining interest every every month of every year until the property is either assessed or either sold or no longer available or no longer considered classified as deferred.
When would they have to come down to City Hall to apply for that to see if they would qualify and what's cut off date?
You have to have your deferment into my office by, I believe, the end of September because it has to be presented to the council by the middle of October.
Okay, so then they would just go down, talk somebody there and ask for the referral paperwork? And it's a lot and have it brought back to you?
So according to our ordinances, you, a person 65 years of age or older, a person who is retired by virtue of permanent or total disability, a person who is a member of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserve who has been ordered into active military service, or there is a hardship on the basis of an exceptional and unusual circumstances not covered by the other standards and guidelines where the termination is made in a non discriminatory manner and does not give the applicant an unreasonable preference or advantage over other applicants.
Yes, Mike?
I don't know if you just covered that or not, but the military is is over 60% disability. I think they're exempt from their taxes. That's not correct. I believe that's correct. Anybody that's over 60%.
Assessments are different than taxes?
No, I'm talking taxes right now. Yep.
Mr. Scott? What what can I do here as far as closing the hearing and adjusting? And staff having time to reevaluate? What can I do?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, the options for the council tonight are you have satisfied the legal obligation for the city to publish notice, send notice of this public hearing, conduct the public hearing, give anyone who received a notice of assessment the opportunity to come and address the council and make any objections, make a record of their objections. I think you have, you have completed that responsibility. Your options now would be to close the hearing, continue the hearing with respect to those who have articulated objections again tonight or in writing so that those could be dealt with in an organized manner at a future meeting. You do have the responsibility, whether you do it tonight or at a future meeting, to make a ruling on each of those objections that have been submitted to you. So it it is the council's choice how to proceed. But your obligation is to, whether you do it tonight or at a future continued hearing with respect to those who have objected, resolve each of those objections. You do have the legal authority to pass the assessment role tonight, subject to modification once you do resolve the objections. If you choose to continue to another meeting, you can still adopt the role tonight with respect to those who did not object. You're not required to, and you do have the ability up until that role is approved to make adjustments to all of the properties on the roll or none of them once you resolve the objection.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm still thinking we should continue the hearing, ask staff to verify the the figures, some of the complaint concerns that were listed in some of the documentation, but also to go back, I believe you indicated that the percentages were higher this year than last year to look at, can we, what would it be if we kept what we did last year?
Yeah, that's certainly an option that we can evaluate. I think I was on this slide when I mentioned that the costs on this slide are within 3 to 8% of what they were last year. So these prices are very similar in line with the costs that were assessed last year. Two years ago, I know that that's been referenced, two years ago when the hearing was continued, council reviewed the the assessment amounts and significantly decreased them. And that put the assessments near 20%. And as a result, those rates in 2003 have been looked at and reviewed as part of this assessment preparation process. And I think since, just for example, on the street reconstruction since 2002, when council reduced those rates, I believe the rate for street reconstruction is approximately 60%. So the percentages that I was referring to were related to these individual rates being 3 to 8% within the rates on this same slide last year.
So would it be fair for me as mayor to close the hearing and allow staff to review the assessments of those that spoke or wrote, right?
Legally, that would be perfectly appropriate, Mayor.
Okay. I would close the hearing on that with that consideration of those that appeared before the council and wrote letters in regards to their assessments. So Audrey?
Are we still going to ask staff to verify, answer the questions that were in that?
Yes.
As it relates to that and also look at the what we are assessing? That if you, if we've closed it, then we can't do that.
Robert?
You can, Mayor, members of the council, you can give staff that direction to bring that information forward to you, and you can make adjustments to the role up until the point you approve the assessment role.
Isn't that what we were being asked to do tonight?
You are now. Yes, Justin?
There there was a recommended action item in the packet for the council to approve the assessments. But until you actually take a motion to approve the assessments, you have the ability to direct changes to be made to that document.
Yeah, I simply closed the hearing and charged our staff to review the challenges and come back with recommendations.
And and there will be a legal responsibility for the council to work their way through each of the objections that you've received and make a ruling on each one of them.
And we're not going to approve the assessment role tonight?
That was my understanding of the mayor's recommendation.
Okay. Are we good on that now that I've I've closed it? And there will be consideration on challenges, right?
But the one additional item, I think, for the council would be, if possible, to announce when the continued hearing would take place, whether that's going to be at the next regular meeting or a special meeting or whatever the council's preference.
Which time do you need, city administrator?
Jared, how much time do we need? Second meeting in September?
Yes, that would be adequate.
The first meeting in September, we do have budget, so we have preliminary budget review, so.
16th.
Linking to.
16th of September. Does it work?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yes, Tom?
I'd just like to just make one adjustment to that, to keep it open. So we're involving everybody that's affected by this. There's people that didn't speak tonight that this could affect. There's people that probably couldn't make it tonight that didn't write a letter. I want to keep this open so it's fair across the board. We're just not singling out half a dozen. We need to do this for everybody. I, like we didn't two years ago when we had the house packed downstairs. This needs to be open for everybody so we can take a little harder look at this.
Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A question for Jared. Engineering wanted to do Gray Savanna, was it two years ago or three years?
I think it was identified in the CIP two years ago.
And then we delayed it because the neighborhood didn't want to go ahead.
That's correct.
If we would have done it, how much savings would it have been? You have any idea?
I don't know in terms of dollar amounts, but I I I think it's been discussed here this evening regarding inflation. We saw prices increase 3 to 8% over last year, so it would have been cheaper, there's no question if that's the question, but.
Justin?
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just in response to some comments made by both council member Nelson and council member Butterfield. I feel like, you know, it's still an open process, it's still a fair process, right? We've, we've taken the objections from the people who have responded to the letter that went out and the notice that was given. We can still, when we meet again in September, make adjustments based on the findings that staff brings to us, and we can adjust the entire role. So it's fair, even if for those people that aren't here, they could still see a reduction in their assessment if that's warranted. So I wouldn't, I don't want to make it seem like it's unfair by you closing the hearing, you know, and and just a reminder that we can still make adjustments as we see fit.
Audrey?
No, I, what council member asked was talking about, I think, I just wanted to clarify with what our city attorney had said, we're not going to approve the assessment role until then. So we can make changes if we want to or if we can.
Mike?
We've talked about inflation and we talked about how the, we've kicked the can down the road. We had a lot of roads that should have been done a long time ago. Now they're all being done or a lot of them are being done. We have got to do something. We have got to do something to make this fair because all you're going to do is see more inflation, more inflation, higher costs. And all the people just like you are going to be in this room saying the same thing, we're paying too much. Only it's going to be a lot more. We need to do something. As a council, as a group, we need to do something that's going to share the wealth, so to speak. We're, we need to get rid of the debt. We need to try to help people get rid of the debt. It's because you live on a road, you shouldn't be getting hit like this, no way. And then years down the road, it's going to be even higher and higher and higher. So we need to do something.
Yeah, just one more quick note. Earlier, council member O'Brien referenced a wheel tax. Am I correct that cities have no authority to leverage a wheel tax?
I think it's just the county, no.
Mayor, council, I thought we had looked at this at one point. Mayor, council, I thought we had looked at this at one point. I think I would rather than try and give you an answer on the spot, have an answer to you at the continued hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Always, we're gonna. What? Huh? Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break. I'll close the hearing. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Continue the hearing to resolve the objections for those who presented objections this evening and consider consideration of the assessment role. Continue that on September sixteenth at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to second discussion. Tom?
Is this going to include everybody? The whole assessment role or just the ones that rose the objections?
Robert?
Mayor, council member, this motion would continue the hearing with respect to those who have objected for the council to make specific rulings on each of those objections. However, the city council would still have authority to make revisions to anybody's assessment that appears on the assessment role up until the time it approves that role after the hearing.
Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Sheldes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next, I'm going to call on Michelle Maratsky from the KCED on the budget for 2025. Michelle?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I will try to be quick. We're looking at numbers, so that's always an exciting thing. I am Michelle Maratsky. I am the Business Development Manager for Kandio High County Economic Development. In your council packets, you will see that KCED's proposed 2025 budget is balanced with total revenues of about eight hundred and forty-eight thousand and total expenses of about eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. The surplus is only about zero point two percent or under $2,000, so we operate with a very tight budget. The proposed revenue shown on page one is thirty-six point six percent less than the current budget of 1.34 million dollars. If we remove the $500,000 childcare grant that KCED was awarded from DED in June 2024 and included on the May ninth, 2024 amended budget, there is a proposed 1.2% increase over the amended budget. This grant is a pass-through grant as KCED is the fiscal host and will facilitate reimbursement and reporting between the sub-grantees and DED. Looking at the Elevate Revenue, also on page one, year one expenses were submitted to DED for reimbursement, and there was nearly $50,000 that was unspent. These dollars will roll into the second budget year for the state, which their budget year is July 1 to June 30. We are in the process of developing the Business Assistance Services Program, which may not use the full $50,000 in KCED's 2024 budget year. What is not used will be available for the first half of KCED's 2025 budget year, so we aren't losing any money with that grant. We have requested a 4.9% increase in the county tax levy. This is driven by the pending move that was approved by the Joint Powers Board at a special meeting on April 10, 2024, and previously approved by the Joint Operations Board on March 14 of 2024. The move will provide dedicated space for the Elevate Community Business Academy in addition to space for committee and board meetings with more than 12 people. If you've ever been in our conference room, it gets a little cozy in there. All right, on the expense side, looking at, it's still on page one. The proposed budget is reduced by about $506,000 or 37%, again, primarily due to the one-time DED grant for childcare. If we remove that $500,000 from the 2024 budget, we have a proposed expense decrease of less than 1%. Turning to page two on the budget. This starts with the CEO or Creating Entrepreneurial Opportunities Program. This is actually a pass-through program, but we did adjust it downward based on the current year actuals. Overall, the Elevate Program is self-sustaining with the $203,500 DED grant and the generous contributions from Southwest Initiative Foundation and other donors. Turning to page three now. We are looking at the total committee expenses that will decrease from about $617,000 to $116,000, which is an 81% decrease. Adjusting the 2024 amount to remove, again, that $500,000 childcare grant from DED, the expenses still decrease by 1.5%. So I want to highlight a few items in the business retention and expansion category toward the bottom of page three and at the top of page four. This is where childcare, the Highway 23 Coalition, and workforce are listed. The budget remained relatively stable, sans, again, that DED childcare grant, with a small decrease of 1.5%. So first in that section is our shared services agreement with UCAP. That has been approved for a two-year term through December 31 of 2026. This partnership has been invaluable with helping provide stability to our, to the childcare providers in Kandio High County. Tanis Duki is our childcare community coordinator, and she has brought a lot of expertise, new ideas, and relationships to the role. We are excited to continue the partnership. The increase in the contract is 4.8% and includes a stipulation that KCED will not be responsible for more than $29,900 each year of the contract. We added a small amount, just $500, for supplies and travel to assist with the cost to attend conferences or other needs related to the Rural Childcare Innovation Program or Strategic Supply Program. Second, in that VRE section, the Highway 23 Coalition budget was reduced by $500. This is because KCED is no longer managing the meeting minutes or fiscal hosting of this organization. Finally, looking at the top of page four, in the Workforce Development Section, that includes the Workforce Solutions Summit. This is a successful event that was held two years ago with 78 attendees. We have started discussions with local partners to host a similar event in 2025. Suggested topics include housing, childcare, broadband, and other quality-of-life concerns that affect attracting and retaining employees. Turning to page five, there are only six pages. Looking at the Employee Compensation Section, this shows a decrease due to the placeholder numbers with the hiring of a new executive director. As the budget process had already started, when the offer was made and accepted, we have chosen to keep the amounts as projected. The actual total compensation for the executive director is expected to be close to the proposed amount. Administrative expenses are proposed to be 49% less than in 2024. The executive search was 31% of the 2024 administrative budget, or $24,000, and is not anticipated to be in the 2025 budget. Finally, on page six. Looking at proposed office expenses, they will increase by 22%. The bulk of this is associated with our new rent costs at the Apple Tree Square location. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the 2025 budget for KCED.
So move. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second discussion. Audrey?
I would request that it show as the recommended action that it's Kandio High County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission budget, not just KCED.
That is our legal name. It is still Kandio High County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission.
All right. Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know back when that name change was made, there were concerns voiced by some of us at this table that that would, at some point in the history down the road, many, many years to come, people would forget that this actually was a joint powers organization, right? That it would be forgotten that the City of Wilmer was a part of it. Was somewhat surprised that they seemed to forget so quickly that the City of Wilmer was a part of it. This council requested formally reconsideration of that name change and sent a request for, I believe, for the Joint Powers Board to get back to us. We're still waiting on that request. But didn't have a problem coming to us for a budget, I noticed.
I apologize for that. All of that happened prior to my joining the organization, which was in March. Well, thank you. Thank you. However, I am, I, I think that it is a very worthwhile conversation. I would also just mention, recently I saw our, our DED commissioner. And I was out at Farm Fest and he stopped by our booth, and I, I said something about Kandio High County, and he said, oh yeah, that's where Wilmer is. So Wilmer is most certainly not forgotten. I will also say that a lot of our work happens in Wilmer just by nature of our offices here. We have the largest population, I think 21,000, some when I read the census data today. So from a staff standpoint, there isn't any way that I'm going to forget that Wilmer is part of that. However, I do recognize the concerns, and I remember hearing about them and reading about them. If it's something that the council would wish us to revisit and bring to the Joint Powers Board as a discussion item, I think our executive director would be amenable to that.
I'm assuming that letter was sent, correct? Looking at Administrator Valiant, and you've never received a response from it? Correct. Okay.
Well, Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Osmus and myself serve on the Joint Powers.
So you can get us a response?
We can get you a response.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any other discussion? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So what's the square footage of your office now?
About half of what we have, we'll have. And I am sorry, because those numbers are just not in my head right now. I, I want to say about 1,500. We will double our square footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
What you're paying a good price for, too, is your electric and heat included, then?
So we do have some utility costs that will be included as well. And I, again, I apologize, I don't have the contract in front of me, but it, it is increased. However, we have also been working with our DED grant to help offset some of those costs in different ways.
What's the storage unit? Where is that?
So that storage unit is behind the Elks building. There's a bank of garages. And so we just have one of those. That will go away because we will have ample storage in the new location. Yep.
And then do you have to pay for snow removal or anything?
My understanding, that's all included. Yep.
Not like the mall, then.
No comment.
I just want to point out that before the new space, they had to rent spaces for, for a lot of meetings. Now they can have all of the meetings in the new location. Yep.
Our Elevate Program did not have its own. We were, we were fortunate to have some generous organizations that we could use their space, but we did have to pay for certain things. We were also hauling materials back and forth. And it'll be great just to have our fall Elevate class in one location.
Thanks.
Desk open for students.
Yes, so that is another, another exciting part of it is that we will actually have two incubator spaces for Elevate graduates that perhaps they are starting their business. They need just, just a quiet space that they can come. They'll have a locking file cabinet, a desk area, and access to that space without having access to the main office. So we're excited to do that. We would, we don't have anything fleshed out yet, but that would come at a, a small cost. Get them, get new business owners used to paying that rent cost as part of their business expenses.
I have no questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldes.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
So eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Connect Wilmer Marketing Proposals, Kyle?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at your last regular meeting, the city council did act on the Fiber Use Agreement for the Connect Wilmer Project. So with continuing that conversation, to build off of that, we're looking at two proposals tonight. Both would supplement the Fiber Use Agreement and supplement each other. So the Broadband Committee has received and reviewed two proposals from Hometown Fiber and Replaced for supplemental services to assist the committee and city staff in efforts to market the Connect Wilmer Project. Incorporating these firms into a locally-driven project can offer substantial benefits, even when the project is led and managed within the community. Some of the areas that we'll be relying on and looking at that were, that are included in these proposals are the expertise and experience. Outside firms bring specialized knowledge and experience that may not be readily available, available locally. Their experience can enhance the quality of the product, ensure the best practices are followed, and address complex challenging, efficiently, address complex challenges efficiently. They offer objective perspectives. These external perspectives can provide a fresh view and insights, helping to identify potential issues or opportunities that might be overlooked. This can lead to more innovative solutions and prevent potential pitfalls. We can also look at resource augmentation or allowing staff in the committee, understanding that our staff and the committee have limited resources and/or capacity to spend as much time as they wish they could on this project. So by partnering with others, they can supplement these shortcomings with additional skills, technology, personnel, and ensuring that the project is complete on time and to a high standard. And also, we can look at risk management. We've talked over and over again that we want to make sure we've got a solid project that we're bringing to the city council. And we can do this by engaging with outside experts that can, the project can benefit from their experience in managing risks, navigating challenges, providing quality resources. This can help, help and, can help in anticipating problems and developing effective mitigation strategies. And then lastly, the efficiency and speed goes without saying. By adding more people, more manpower or workforce, we can utilize others, we can use processes and tools that can streamline the project, its execution, potentially all accelerating timelines and reducing or limiting costs. I'll go into the second proposal as well, or they, they go in hand in hand, but the second proposal really talks about imaging, branding, marketing. And that was the proposal from Replace. As you know, having a project brand or for a fiber project like this is going to be very important. It's going to be important that we can create a message, create an image, create a logo, create a story around what this identity, what this project is. So branding, again, helps establish a clear identity for the project. A strong brand will help make the project recognizable, memorable, and distinguishing it from the other initiatives and helping it stand out in the public's mind. We can build credibility and trust. A well-defined brand can enhance the project's credibility. It conveys professionalism and reliability, which can build trust with stakeholders, partners, and the target audience. Consistency and clarity. Branding provides a consistent message and visual identity, which ensures that all communications and materials are unified and clear. This consistency helps with the effect, helps effectively conveying the project's goals and values. Engagement and support. This was also discussed at the last meeting where we would like this to really be a community-led project at this point, and, and what I mean by that is showing the city council and staff are, showing ourselves that there is community support for a project like this. So by having a compelling brand to engage that target audience more effectively, generating interest and enthusiasm, it could foster a sense of community and support among stakeholders and beneficiaries. And we can look at, in a crowded market and competent, competitive environment, a strong brand helps differentiate the project from others. This can be crucial for attracting it. This can be crucial for attracting intentions for funding, um, donations, or garnering media coverage. Motivation and alignment. For internal teams and partners, a strong ban- brand can help enhance motivation by clearly communicating the project's mission and vision. Uh, again, can lead to greater commitment and cohesiveness amongst the team and those individuals involved. And the long-term impact. Uh, we want to make sure that this is a successful project for the city of Wilmer. And having a well-developed brand can have lasting benefits, contributing to the project's legacy and long-term impact. It helps create, it helps in creating a lasting impression that can facilitate future initiatives or expansions. So in your packet, there are two proposals, one from Hometown Fiber and the other from Replace. Hometown Fiber piece. Actually, I'll pause there, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to invite up Dave Sisser, who is a member of the broadband committee, and I'd like uh, Dave to share a few thoughts, um, uh, from the broadband committee, our review and, um, just the overall recommendation, his overall recommendation from the committee's standpoint on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I appreciate the time here. I, uh, Dave Sisser. Uh, I'm a member of the Connect, uh, Wilmer Fiber Committee from the start. And, um, it's been an experience and a joy to, uh, look at the concept, explore the options from, from day one to a hometown, uh, fiber model and what that might mean for the city of Wilmer. You have shown support for this project, having not committed to it yet, rightfully so. I believe that these next are our next two steps for the committee to move forward. We need Hometown Fiber to start our community engagement. We need to get the community involved. If we don't, this project will not work. We need community engagement. We need, uh, help with Hometown Fiber, the marketing experts, branding experts, and our committee to move this forward and to get community support for this project. It's essential that we do that. These are the next two steps, I feel, that ask, that we're asking for us as a committee to move forward to get you the information for a final decision.
Questions from the council? Tom?
Kyle, did you check on with the city of Buffalo with their fiber? You know, I talked to you. I talked to a guy up there this summer that they had it made. We're only at two hundred and fifty people this year signed up for it. That is a very low number of people for the price of this to keep moving forward.
Yes. Thank you for that reminder, Councilmember Butterfield. I did reach out to the managing director of that network and never did receive a response. So I unfortunately cannot elaborate any more than that.
Well, on my research of it, I don't have it with tonight, but they were charging for their fiber from sixty-five to a hundred dollars. I don't see City of Wilmer gonna be above two hundred and fifty dollars for in that price range. You know, when this was first brought up, it was under fifty dollars service, I believe, what was first pitched to the council. And the Buffalo only has two hundred and fifty people on their fiber network. That's a lot of money that the city's paying just to have two hundred and fifty people on, on their internet. So I think we really need to see how it's going to be paid out, how much it's going to cost the city before we put any more money into it. We put in twenty-five thousand dollars already before we're into it for fifty thousand. And I don't remember what we paid for the engineering part of it. But before we get too deep, we really need to see the numbers, how it's going to be paid, what we think we're gonna have for users on there. Cause if we're only gonna have a thousand people, you know, with our bond and interest payments, we're gonna have to raise property taxes. I'd rather raise prop taxes on the streets than for internet. You know, look, look at all the people in here tonight complaining about property taxes. So I think, uh, we really need to get the hard numbers first before we spend any more numbers or any more dollars.
They weren't addressing property taxes, they were addressing assessments.
Well, yeah. Well, the assessment is part of it.
Property tax.
They're still paying tax on it. That's what they're getting at. But, uh, if we only have a thousand people signed up for, for this, everybody's property taxes involved. You know, and City Buffalo's pretty similar to Wilmer. They only got two hundred and fifty people signed up.
Just want, if I may, I can address a couple of those questions or comments. Um, the council has reviewed, uh, a preliminary pro forma, um, business plan for this at a, a previous work session and previous meeting. Um, that will consistently and more accurately be updated with our intention and our hope is that, um, by moving forward with a strategic marketing and community outreach campaign, if you will, it's going to make that business plan, that pro forma, even stronger. Uh, we have identified, um, kind of our, our break-even point or our desired take rate, if you will, the amount of customers that we need to be on the network, um, structured over, I believe it's roughly eight years to hit our goal. Uh, we're being very, uh, conservative with our pro forma. Uh, we want to make sure that we aren't trying, uh, overstepping or reaching too far out too fast and making sure that we can build a customer base before, one, we start making bond payments. Uh, do we have enough customer base to enter into phase two? Can we move to phase three? Are there enough ISPs on the network offering service? And some of that conversation was on the fiber use agreement last, at the last council meeting. Um, so we do have, the council has seen some preliminary data on the pro forma. And again, uh, by engaging with the community from our stance is going to be able to give you, the council, the best information on moving forward with the project. If we go through an entire fall, winter, and we can't get a hundred people to sign up, I will be the first one to tell you, do not go forward with this project. But you don't know, we, what we don't know is what we don't know. If we, if we can't engage with the public and have a meaningful conversation about what the project is, that defeats the purpose of it. I mean, this is, that's what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Yeah.
Um, and the, on the pay packages as well, there are multiple levels of packages that people can subscribe for. So anywhere from uh, low income, if you, uh, meet low incomes criteria, there's going to be a, a severely reduced or a reduced package that people can sign up for. That might be thirty dollars a month. I don't know what that is at this point. But again, part of the engagement that we need to have with people is having, here's what a price package looks like from fifty dollars a month to a hundred dollars a month for a resident, or from a business standpoint, two hundred dollars a month to two thousand dollars a month, whatever your needs are going to be. Again, without having those conversations, it's going to make it a little more difficult for us to give you that accurate information, uh, when we're going to be coming back in the spring to recommend a project or not. So I just want to make sure you're, I want to get that out there.
Yeah. But again, though, we have to start seeing the hard numbers first before we're really spending any more money. It would be great for you to come up and say, okay, this is, uh, what we're looking at. Seventy-five dollars for this service, a hundred dollars for the service, if you're low, forty-nine dollars for the, for this service. Here's what it costs for a bond. Here's our interest. Okay. We have to make a payment of forty-five thousand dollars every month, you know, to construct the as one, you know? So I'm just shooting from the hipper. I don't, I don't know the numbers at all.
I think we need to wait and see what interest there is before we make a decision.
But we, we really should see what the dollar amount could be, the price point, before we spend any more money going forward.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, Councilmember Butterfield, what it is that you're wanting to see that we haven't been shown already. I don't know if you were at those meetings, but, but we've seen that. The staff has brought us these things.
I think things has changed. This has been going on for over a year. Have, have, uh, we really gotten a breakdown on the price point? We've just been told forty-five dollars. It's like I said, I talked to Buffalo guy there and I, I passed over the information to, to Kyle. But they only have two, my, where I'm coming from is, they only have two hundred and fifty people signed up.
Okay.
And if we're gonna be spending twenty-five million dollars plus interest on two hundred and fifty people.
That's, yeah, but that's, but again, the pro forma that they've shown us. The pro forma that they've shown us will break it down, has broken it down. We've seen that. I think everything that you're asking for has been given to you.
Should have been updated and reevaluated the part that they get along.
The last time you brought it to us was June?
I would say spring, yes.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and check.
Right. I mean, I can understand that, you know, from a philosophical reason that you're opposed to the plan, but to say that they haven't given.
I'm not opposed to plan. I personally want it. I really do. My internet's not the best. I, I've streamed. I've gotten away from one company cause it's just a stare and buffers the whole time. I actually don't even have cable right now. I only get it during football season. So I'm looking at one that's not gonna sit there and just buffer the whole time.
That's me too, by the way. We should figure out how to stream Vikings games together.
But personally, I, I want this, but sitting here in this seat, after finding out, talking with Buffalo, only finding out two hundred and fifty people in City Buffalo signed up on it, kinda.
For sure. And I think that's why I've appreciated they have safeties built into that.
Money until we see how it's gonna go.
Yeah. But I don't think you can, until they can get out and have those conversations with the community members, we don't know if it's gonna be two hundred and fifty people or if it's gonna be, you know, twenty thousand people, right?
Carl?
I, I would agree with, uh, Councilor Aska on that, that, that we need to, we need to know. And, and like you said, we, we don't know what we don't know. And if it, if we move forward with this, yeah, forty thousand dollars, but then we know and we don't go any further. You know, that then we say, okay, we tried and it's not gonna work. And that's a lot of man hours down the drain. And I'd be really sorry if that happens. I'm very hopeful that we're gonna get enough, you know, hope. How far does that go? But I think we need to spend this forty thousand dollars so that we do know.
That is an informed decision.
Well, I, I'm just gonna make my point. We spent point five thousand dollars already. Hey. How many people think we got off of that that have done a sign up?
Sure. So from that, we do have twenty-six letters of support from local businesses and industry. Uh, that twenty thousand, we decided to focus on a lot of engagement and, well, engagement and outreach with local businesses, um, that and then work towards, um, materials that were created for that. So this is, um, what I can say on that, from that, from this agreement to the pre- from the previous agreement to what it is now is going to be a lot more hands-on by city staff. Uh, we would like to end the broadband committee. Um, we want to make sure we are driving the message that we want to drive with the support of Hometown Fiber and being able to focus on areas of strategy, the appropriate messaging, any campaign timelines that we should be looking at. Um, and then getting, using our, really taking a grassroots approach on how we want to attract and, and build up support for this. Michelle, if it's okay, if I bring up a conversation that we've had, uh, Michelle from the, uh, from the, uh, K C E D has been offered in some capacity to help out and assist. So there's, there's partnership to, there's, there's willingness, there's partnership through local entities here that want to make sure that there's a project, this is a successful project. At the broadband committee level, we've had, um, people come forward and want to invest or donate into the project. So there, and that's without really doing a whole lot of engagement and outreach. Now, like I had mentioned at the last meeting as well, the, the amount of engagement that we've done has been three Rockin' Robins and Wilmer Fest. Uh, we've had nothing but great interactions, the majority with great interactions with all those individuals that see support and see the, understand the idea of what this project is and, and appreciate what the city of Wilmer is trying to do and, and bringing this, bringing our city, future-proofing our city. I'll say it that way. Uh, Councilmember Butterfield, I wholeheartedly appreciate with what you're asking and requesting and, and that will, that information will be, that is part of the why we want to do this, is to make sure I can, if I'm gonna ask somebody to sign up for a package, say, sign up here, but there's no price on it, are you gonna sign it? I don't think so. As, we want to make sure that we've got a complete package put together so people can look at and, and truly evaluate and make that informed decision. If the city was to bring this project forward at a price of this, at this symmetrical speed for, for this service, would you sign up for it? And those are the types of conversations that we want to have in addition to having strategic, um, strategic meetings with stakeholders, local businesses, industries, making sure that those customers are being also heard and that those, uh, needs that they are bringing forward are going to be incorporated into this project as well. So, um, I appreciate the comments and I assure you that that will be part of, of this proposal is.
Just one last comment. Okay. So twenty-six letters off of twenty-five thousand, so we're looking at another forty thousand. What number of commitments do you need then off of this money to keep this moving forward? And what happens if you only get half of the commitments? Are you still gonna be coming back?
So the fiber use agreement requires one hundred subscribers. Um, however, uh, there are different, there are other options. Not just that. There's other, you know, goals and other, um, milestones that the project needs to hit before we continue to move forward. Off the top of my head, I believe in the pro forma for year one, we need a take rate of approximately eight percent, which is out of, uh, phase one is right around two hundred and fifty users, let's say. That's what we would consider to be a successful phase one. Again, we are aiming very, we are being very conservative with those numbers. And then that, that take rate from eight percent, which we're aiming for is somewhere in the ballpark of forty percent. We have strategically placed that over an eight-year period of time to continue to market, brand, and make those connections. But we're looking at, again, zero impact, the goal of zero impact to the levy. And again, with those conservative numbers with the price points that we are anticipating, I think it is achievable. Um, but again, we, we, I can't give those assurances or assure the council any more than that at this point without being able to ask people to sign up and engage with them.
So two, you, you think two hundred and fifty people is gonna be enough to keep this moving forward?
For phase one, year one, that's what we have identified in the pro forma, yes. To continue to go, again, like I had mentioned, by year eight, we would like to be at forty percent take rate for the entire city. So going from forty percent of end users, um, of a population of, or households of, I don't know, seventy-five hundred households in the city, uh, we want, we want to make sure that we're hitting those, those benchmarks. I mean, that's the, that is the goal. But that will be more strategically defined and refined over time. And again, give you the council, the informed decision, information to make that, give you the information to make that informed decision.
Also, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm confused. Are you looking at ISPs to sign on or are you looking at households to sign on? Cause we don't have the internet. We have to have a ISPs.
Correct. We're looking at.
And they're the ones charging the fee. You know, the customers.
Sure. Go ahead, Dave.
To answer that question, with this next two phases, then the discussions can start to look at multiple ISPs, which is what we really want. Right now, you're asking us to move forward, um, but our hands are gonna be tied because we don't have the resources to be able to take the next step, to get the numbers you're looking for reliable, so you can make a decision down the road. I feel it's critical that these next two steps, yes, it's money, but I can't give you the answer or we can't give you the answer without taking this next step to get you the information you need.
So Hometown, they have one ISP signed up?
There's been one that has acknowledged that they are, will be committed. They're, they aren't, they aren't mentioning ISPs. But this next step, Hometown's gonna be reaching out and searching for more ISPs to be able to commit to this network along with a marketing, um, and an interesting thing, we're at, um, now Rockin' Robins and another portion of what this is gonna do is, how many people know what the fiber broadband's about? Community engagement. This is gonna be the community engagement to answer those questions and give the information, not from Facebook, not from phone, from hearsay. There's so many people I've talked to that just tell me, I tell them I'm on the fiber broad, well, tell me about it. I never knew that. We gotta educate the people to be able to make a decision. That's why we're gonna move forward.
Usually though, there's an outcry from citizens. Usually though, there's an outcry from citizens. They want something and government does it. I don't see an outcry from the citizens for this. There's enough, uh, private sector companies out there.
Are the citizens informed?
I don't know.
Be able to make a decision.
It all boils down to cost.
It's gonna boil down to cost?
Survey and they wanted to pay fifty dollars a month. I don't think that's gonna happen with this.
I see that with multiple ISPs, I could see different tiers, different ISPs attacking different tiers of customers, a low-tier customer. Businesses are gonna ask for high-tier, more security, more benefits from an ISP. They're gonna pay a higher rate. More ISPs are gonna give us more competition. So I think we can accommodate the different price structures that are gonna be needed in a network like this.
Right.
So Arvig is in town. Most people don't know that. They just specialize in business, industrial or commercial. They don't do residential. They're already out in industrial park.
Right, right. They have fiber right next to my building, yes.
There's customers out there. They would go to them very easily.
With the three-year contract and, you know, in a nice, uh, price tag. They approached me as for my building was central communications for fiber and I saw the prices on that as well, so.
But they're getting it.
I didn't sign up for it.
Well, that's you.
I know.
You don't have to. You don't have to sign up for this either.
I want fast, reliable internet.
Not everyone needs that.
Not today. But I believe well in the near future.
It's worth spending twenty-five million dollars for a city to do this.
How's the city gonna grow?
I think we're growing now.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion to approve the resolution with hometown fiber. There's another motion that will come after this on replace, but this is on hometown fiber. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Asp?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
No.
And Osmas?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
Motion passes. Now we need a motion to approve the resolution with replace.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Asp?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
No.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
And O'Brien?
Aye.
Six ayes, two noes.
Motion carries. All right, off to professional services agreement between the city of Wilmer, Bolton and Mink. Kyle?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we first need a motion to remove the item from the table.
What's that?
We would need a motion from, to remove this item from the table.
Well, this is tables?
This is table, correct.
Okay, we have a motion to do so. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Would that be a roll call?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
And Asp?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, at the last regular meeting, uh, the city council asked staff to, uh, go back and look at this professional services agreement between Bolton and Mink and just really provide a more, uh, comprehensive overview of what the request actually is. And, uh, I do want to apologize to the council. I think I spoke for a little while that evening and maybe just, uh, lost a little train of thought or focus on that. So I do apologize, but I wanna be able to bring that back and I bring this item back and explain what we're looking at here. So this professional service agreement between the city of Wilmer and Bolton Mink is for the Wilmer Fiber, Fiber Project for Phase One. The total request, uh, the total ask for uh, this agreement is, uh, four hundred, not to exceed four hundred and three thousand dollars. Now, on the memo in your packet provided, um, August fifteenth, I met with, uh, Josh Alveson with Bolton and Mink to look at the four areas or tasks that we're looking that this agreement would consist of. So the network design, construction documents, permits, bidding, and that table breaks out, um, the contracted amount, um, the percent of were complete, yet to be complete, um, and then anticipated completion, uh, for those projects or that areas, area of the project as well. Um, I also did include a breakout in the agenda memo of the invoices. We do have some incurred, we do have incurred costs with Bolton and Mink at this point as well. And that is a total at this point of, uh, yet to be incurred cost of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, seven hundred and seven, excuse me, one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, also in the packet or again, just the contractor, the invoice amounts, uh, that matched the memo. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at this point, I will pause if there are any specific questions.
Questions?
So how much more is this gonna take to keep this going then? Or, because this is for the fiber network project, right?
Yep. So this is the civil engineering portion of it. Uh, so the remaining contract, um, the remaining out of that four hundred and three thousand is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Again, that would be a not to exceed amount for phase one. And yeah, the network architecture on the hometown side is completed already.
So why are we moving forward with another, you know, four hundred thousand dollars again? When we don't know how many people are gonna be signed up? That's what I'm getting at. We're spending thirty thousand dollars here, twenty-five thousand dollars here, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars there, now four hundred thousand dollars here. We got twenty-six letters of interest, uh, about a half million dollars.
Sure.
So that's where I'm getting that, where I was getting that before. Twenty-six letters, half a million dollars, we're spending on this right now. We, we fulfill this, move forward. Oh, we're into it for a million dollars. We've only got twenty-four million dollars left to go. Now we're not even looking at the interest. And this is in the past and we're gonna be stuck with two hundred and fifty people in Wilmer with this service at a probably a rate of, uh, five hundred thousand dollars a piece or getting the benefit from the rest of the taxpayers. All this information like this, all should have been really brought to us beforehand, before we how many people we're gonna need. And just like you said, we don't know. I can't bring somebody a blank sheet of paper and say, sign, sign to it. But that's what you're asking every taxpayer in Wilmer do right now. Here, I don't know what our price point for internet's gonna be, but here, here's a bill for five hundred thousand dollars.
Councilmember Butterfield, I can appreciate the comments. Again, uh, this is the approach that we have taken. Uh, the council has previously approved network architecture for this project with hometown fiber. And now it's time with, with that, the civil engineering portion of that. Again, uh, it comes to provide, being able to provide you, the council, with a complete project, um, or a substantial project that now you can act on, be informed again and act on. And if the council is ready to be prepared to approve this project in the spring of twenty twenty-five, if we do not have the engineering portion of, and we do not proceed on time or in the spring of twenty twenty-five, and I.
And if we don't proceed, we're out a half million dollars. What are we gonna do to make up that half million dollars? These, these vehicles in two years, they need substantial, that'll cover all those vehicles.
So the funds that we're using for this are not levy dollars. These are funds coming from the industrial park. So the industrial park fund has been funding this project since its conception.
All right, Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, work has been done.
Correct.
But we've not yet agreed to this.
Again, I, um, best thing I can come up with is, um, there's not an excuse that the project isn't, hasn't been completed. There was some, I would say, uh, some back and forth on, on city staff side and, um, on my side on the order of events and the processes that happened, um, taking over, um, really taking this project on. I would, it was the impression that this contract was already approved and moved, and again, a lot at the same time or during the same time period of what the network architecture was done. That, that's what these projects, they complement each other, uh, since the network architecture piece was done. I wrongly assumed that the civil engineering portion was also completed prior. Um, so at this point, we are just trying to make sure that we can, um, make sure those incurred costs are paid. Um, right now Bolton and Mink has, uh, stated to me his pencils down. There's no additional invoices coming this way until we can, until we move forward.
So the staff thought that this contract had been approved by council and was moving forward with it. Is that what I'm hearing?
That was my impression, yes.
Thanks for explaining how that happened.
Audrey?
Thank you, Marys. Um, I'm, I'm following up on maybe where Councilmember Asp was with that. Um, it appears that it was executed by Bolton and Mink, but not by the city? Or did we sign somewhere and just didn't get to the council?
To my understanding, um, I did not sign. I don't believe the administrator signed.
Our previous employees?
Not speak for previous employers, employees if they have signed, but.
We don't have a signed document is what you're saying.
My knowledge, we do not have a signed document.
Okay. Um, just so the other question is, I understand that we owe the, so we already did pay eight thousand, but we owe a hundred and forty-six thousand for seven hundred and seventy-three for the work that's done now. If we simply pay that and we wait for a couple of months to see where we go with the marketing and the other, or you're asking us to approve the contract? And I guess the second question is, I know it's already a signed contract from their standpoint, so where do, how, how are we at with that legally?
I will defer legal questions to the city attorney.
Mayor, city council members, in order to have a binding contract, you need both parties to sign. And for a city to enter into a contract, you need the city council to approve it at these dollar amounts. So there's no binding agreement. There, there, I will qualify my answer though. There's, if this becomes a dispute for, uh, claim for compensation for services already provided, there could be other avenues for them to recover some or all of those fees if this reaches that level.
Okay, so what if we paid the amount up to date now? That would change this agreement also, because this is a total agreement. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the best for the city right now to be doing.
At a minimum, I would really like to get up, caught up to speed with Bolton and Mink. Um, they're great partners for the city and we really do enjoy working with Bolton and Mink. So I wanna make sure we do what is right by them and make sure that, that they are paid. Uh, we can also, uh, you had made a comment or stated a question earlier about asking to wait a couple of months. As my understanding is, Bolton and Mink has pencils down on this project and not, um, you know, it would delay the anticipated completion dates. But if we give the instruction not to proceed with any more work until noticed otherwise, I'm sure that would be agreeable. Again, just delays the completion dates identified in the memo.
So ju- just thinking this through, I mean, they put a bid out there of four hundred and three thousand to do this. So if we agreed to the contract and asked them to stop at the point, I mean, pay them for what they've done, but ask them to stop, is that something that can be done too?
Mayor, I will just, one of the provisions in this agreement that is in your packet would give the city the right to suspend the contract, uh, until further notice. Hypothetically, if the council approved the contract, city staff would still have the authority to communicate a suspension of future work.
Tom?
You know, we got Jared here tonight. I would like to put this on hold for two weeks. That way Bolton and Mink can reply back why they went forward, who they got the authorization for. Before we move on this, we'll just let, you know, Jared go back and explain documentation's not there. This is a huge bill, pretty big bill that needs to be paid. I would like to, uh, pay Bolton and Mink up too, but we need to find out why they started without a contract. You know, I would be comfortable waiting here and back in two weeks on how this got proceeded into us for, you know, two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Julie?
I think you explained that, didn't you? And Bolton and Mink moved forward with what they were under the oppression. It was, it was, it was done.
Yeah, I would say I think there's was some confusion again from the transfer of just from previous staff, not fully understanding what or not realizing what was completed, what wasn't completed. Um, again, it's not a, this is not a, a slight or a, I don't wanna leave a distaste in anyone's mouth on work that Bolton and Mink has done for the city. It was nothing, that is not what this is about.
No, that, that's.
This is just us trying to make sure we can square and make right is what is done, uh, and continue to move forward. Again, if the council wishes to suspend further action, um, we can most certainly have that conversation with Bolton and Mink.
I don't believe I've got a motion yet to, uh, approve the resolution for professional services. Julie?
The ramifications of not going forward with the, the amount to do the project, we're delaying it and then we're gonna delay being able to, to implement it and to move forward with it.
Correct.
Justin?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Audrey is first.
Thank you. Um, I'd be good with approving the contract, paying what they have spent to date, but putting it on hold for a month or two while you are, you've got some other things there and come back to us when you think it's, makes sense to do the next steps.
Justin?
Can you? I'm just looking at your table and trying to understand the amount of, if Councilmember Nelson's proposal, what's the amount of in dollars that, that we would be paying for the work that's already completed? And then what's remaining in that contract is.
So the amount.
Looking at it, but the numbers don't seem to add up to me.
Yeah.
So the amount, I apologize, apologize if I have a typo, but the invoiced amount date, um, has a one hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars. The city has paid, I will double check the invoice to make sure my dollar amount is correct. Is that eight thousand dollars? So there's a remaining balance at this point, approximately a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. We will verify that, that is the correct dollar amount, but it would be the invoices attached to the packet.
Okay. And then in addition to that, we're still missing, you know, up to four hundred and three would be the, if we would, that's two forty-seven.
Correct.
It's the two forty-four.
That's what we're into it for.
Contract work value complete?
Yep.
No. I see that, yeah. I see that, yeah.
So again, the invoices that we have are from, we begin in February and go all the way through the end of July. Um, we will verify the correct dollar amount with Bolton and Mink. But I believe those numbers are accurate.
And I'm still confused as to what does contract work value complete on the table mean? Column total's two hundred and forty-four thousand?
I will have to get back to you.
Okay. I mean, I think it makes a difference, I feel like, in, in the next step and the appropriate one in my mind. I can agree with Councilmember Osmus that, you know, if, if, if we're at sixty-one percent of, of work complete, we already have to pay them for sixty-one percent. I don't know that it's worth slowing the process down for the remaining of the thirty-nine percent. If that, you know, the gap makes a difference to me.
To my understanding, um, with my conversation with, uh, Mr. Alveson, was the invoice that we have in your packet are what is, was owed. So I, I will go back and double check on what that two forty-four number is, but.
You could, you could come back to the next meeting with us for the remainder.
If need be, sure.
Okay. I would offer a motion then to be the invoiced amount, uh, to Bolton and Mink.
Talk about a second.
Second.
Give the motion a second. Do you have something, Audrey?
No, so we aren't approving the contract, we're simply paying the invoices.
It's the intention of my motion. I'm hoping that the contract will come back at the next meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Anybody else? Roll call.
One.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
I just need a clarification. So we're paying the one seventy-seven or whatever. I don't have it here.
One forty-six. Well, we've already paid, we've paid eight thousand, so we owe one forty-six.
One forty-six. That's what we're voting on.
Aye.
Aye.
Butterfield?
O'Brien?
Aye.
And Os?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Christopher, major subdivision for Centricare East Edition. We got one guy that's been very patient here. He was here early. He has sat through the whole meeting. Did he learn anything?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll talk about the major subdivision for Centricare East Edition. The young man that you referenced, John Bill, um, from Centricare, um, they're proposing to do a, or construct a ambulance garage at Seventh Street Southwest and Wilmer Avenue. What we're taking a look at now on the straight, on the screen is parcel number, parcel number nine, five, two, three, one, zero, one, two, zero. Um, the subdivision is to take the southern part of that parcel and make that into the garage. Um, the entire parcel is about three point three acres and, um, Centricare came to planning commission to brief commissioners on July seventeenth, and then we voted on, or commissioners voted on August seventh, um, to recommend that it is approved. Um, you might look at this and think, why is this a major subdivision? Um, it's only one parcel because it is located on a county road. Um, it is then qualified as a major subdivision, not a minor subdivision. So this is the proposed site plan, um, to construct the garage. I believe it has about twenty-six parking spaces, um, for staff as well. Some of the things that came up, um, at planning commission, we can talk about those, is also reflected in the minutes, um, from planning commission on, um, in August, on August seventh, um, the Seventh Street, um, Street Southeast. It is probably a great contender to be, um, to restrict parking on Seventh Street. So I know councilperson Nelson brought, um, that up as well. We spoke about Ucap today. Um, and this is something doable that can be done at a later date and requested by our city engineer to city council. And this is the final, um, plat, um, this is the preliminary and final plat for nine, five, two, three, one, zero, one, two, zero. Uh, I'm looking for two motions, one to approve the subdivision of the parcel as well as approving the preliminary and final plat. And I'll stand for any questions.
So it just takes him lot two.
Correct.
Lot one remains.
Vacant and is privately owned, yes.
I can make a motion to approve the subdivision of parcel, nine, five, two, three, one, zero, one, two, zero, into two lots.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second discussion. Yes, Rick?
So what's going to happen with the old ambulance garage by the hospital and is this going to be an additional?
It is. I can answer that for you if you want. Uh, the ambulance garage that's located on Becker and Second is going to remain and is the same building, um, but used for Centricare for other purposes. This will be the primary location.
Was there any concern from neighbors with the noise and sirens and stuff at all times of day?
Nope, you're correct. Uh, councilperson, Baggerly, the, um, during our planning commission meeting on August seventh, uh, there were some concerns about, um, the ambulance being close to, um, a site where that could be a trigger for those, um, residents or tenants. And it's my understanding that there are some, um, provisions that we can put in place or that Centricare is agreeable to, one for being not to turn on the siren, um, as a exit seventh going on to Wilmer. Uh, and then the other one, were there any other things that you all could do?
Cause you're building a shelter for homeless people on the corner across the street.
Well.
Ladies' shelter. Other down a couple of blocks.
Just to gloss over, the, um, Ucap is proposing to build, um, transitional housing for, um, an array of different reasons, but yes, you're correct. So that was taken in consideration.
There shouldn't be an issue with traffic then. Just be a stop sign and.
I guess, um, you are correct that there's a stop sign going down onto Wilmer Avenue there. Um, but we feel that the traffic on Wilmer Avenue, while there's a lot of traffic during certain times of the day, um, it is manageable to get out onto that. Um, and not all of our responses from that area require license warrants either. Um, so obviously we don't use them when it's required, um, for that emergency response for nine-one calls. To get on Wilmer Avenue.
You still have to stop at the stop signs.
Yeah, you still have to obey traffic laws.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we have a motion to approve the subdivision. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Os?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Then we need a motion to approve the plat. Make that motion. Second. Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Os?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next is a discussion, uh, in response to a letter from the county and our city administrator will speak to us about that. Welcome, Leslie.
Yes. So we had the letter that you have in front of you from the county that was discussed at the county level, I would say about a month ago, and we received that. And so they are looking for a response for that, uh, letter to see if the city is interested in working on some maybe opportunities within their facilities. They will be tomorrow, they will be approving, um, hiring a facility architect or going through the facility design. And, um, so they're just looking for us to say that, uh, as you can see in the draft letter that I provided, that we would be accepting, that we would certainly look at any opportunities that we could work with the county for whatever that facility needs, study does come out with in probably merch.
So this could be anything for potential of sharing a space to purchasing?
I don't, I could, until the facility needs is, is done, I don't know if we can really say what that would look like. Probably all the above.
All right. Audrey?
Um, just two comments. There was no date on the letter from the county. I thought that was kind of interesting. Um, I did appreciate the second sentence in the letter, um, that if we are approving it, that discussing collaborative opportunities once the assessment is complete. So we're not participating in the assessment. We are simply waiting for the assessment to be complete. But I think there should be a date on the letter too.
Yes. Well, it was just in case you didn't want to send that one.
I agree.
So this is for information only?
No, I would like you to approve that, this letter, and then we will date it and we'll send it off to the county ASAP.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter, second to the board.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Os?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Thank you, Leslie. Department Director Updates. Pablo, you go first. Community Growth Director Pablo Obregon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I have been learning a lot tonight too. And one of the highlights I want to, um, share with you is what you are receiving today. We are, um, setting up our fifth welcoming week event here in Wilmer. Uh, downtown Wilmer coordinator, uh, Raleigh Kennedy and myself are leading a community group that is planning the event. And we are very excited to finally be able to invite you, um, for this event and continue to build trust uh, with our new members of our community, with you city leaders of, um, our city, with the staff. And, um, hopefully we can continue to build, uh, this community as we continue to grow. Part of the growth that our city is experiencing is not only something that we, as the staff of the cities, um, organizing and leading, but also community efforts are starting to be developed. Following, uh, the lead that you all have taken by, um, create this space of community growth in the city. A couple of examples are, uh, the event that happened yesterday at Robins Island, a taste of Ukraine. Uh, a group of residents from Ukraine who arrived, uh, three, four years ago, um, seeing the results of the continuing, um, political turmoil in their country, um, decided to, uh, find a way to support their family members and, uh, people in their country. And our local, uh, city, residents stepped up and have helped, uh, the three families that have put together this event. And it was such a good turnout to know that, um, uh, the community is responding to this type of efforts. A sign that we are creating a stronger community, a sign that in spite of the growth of our community, we can continue to support and learn from each other. A couple of weeks ago, uh, also in Wilmer, um, and I've been waiting for this moment to practice my Norwegian. Um, there was an event also called Flirlag Stevne, uh, which was, um, a Norwegian celebration especially of the ancestry. Um, and stories were told. Genealogy stories and connections have continued to reappear and the stories of immigration, um, were shared. Stories that are very similar to the new immigrants of today. The reasons why people moved from far places, um, back a hundred years ago plus, uh, to, uh, the stories that I am more familiar with the more recent ones, including my own. In that connection, um, on Wednesday, uh, the Candi Ojai Historical Society, we will also have the opportunity to listen to stories that are being told by two leaders of the Upper Sioux community. Uh, they will be telling the stories of all those transitions that have happened in their history. Uh, and this is a reminder for all of us who at one point have been immigrants in our country and especially in this part of, um, the state, to take a look at the history, recognize that the land in which we stand and have made our homes here, uh, also belong to, um, the indigenous communities and we should be thankful. And that is part of the question of who we are today. And the welcoming week then becomes another space for us to bring people who have lived here for many, many generations, new immigrants who are recently coming to this area. And also those that have moved here before many of us. To celebrate in downtown Wilmer is one of those special occasions. I hope you all can participate. Uh, this effort is also sponsored, um, by an organization called Welcoming America. Um, they have several initiatives. Uh, one of them is Welcoming Week, the one event that we are being part of. The other, um, initiative they have is called, uh, Welcoming Rural, which is helping rural communities to, uh, imagine how can we become a better and a stronger community? Uh, I am being part of that cohort this year. I have been learning quite a bit, but also many seeds have been planted, um, so that I can, uh, share with the city leadership and with the council, uh, on opportunities for future, uh, growth of our community. And the last event that we're hoping one day we will, uh, join, one of their initiatives is to apply for, um, Welcoming City. Uh, there is no rural community that have received that status by Welcoming America and I will be more than, uh, and that is one of my hopes and dreams to, um, be able to apply so that we can receive that status. Not because we want to get an status on a piece of paper, but because of the rest of the nation can see all the work that you are all doing, uh, the city staff is doing, the members of our community are doing, and we can celebrate together that fact. I think that's all I have for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you, Pablo. I, I, I especially enjoyed the Norwegian. Can you say ufta?
Ufta to sentak.
Thank you. Rob, you're next. Park and Rec Director, Rob Bobgarn.
Thank you, Mayor, member of the council. Talk a little bit about summer programming this past year for us. Or I'm pretty pleased about what happened this past summer with our programs. Just want to give a shout out to the rec staff, the umpires, adult and youth. The lifeguards, everyone that helps puts it together, makes us have great programs. Another shout out would be to the public works crew and the civic center crew to making sure our fields are ready, especially with all the rain that we've had. We didn't really have to cancel all that many games. So it's kudo to those guys. As you'll see with some of the numbers that we've had, we've had some increases in several of the programs. One of the things that we revamped was the first and second grade baseball. So if you ever saw those kids out there on Monday and Wednesday nights, they got to play a special game out on the turf. They get walk up music, they get announced and the kids were pretty excited. They had their eye black on and everything. So it's a pretty good deal for those kids. You know, we're gearing up for fall right now. We just had the fall football camp with the high school team. And we're getting ready for our flag football season. That will be probably roughly about 20 teams. That will have teams from McCray, New London. I think we're working with Bold as well. So we'll have 20 teams plus over at Roseville playing on Thursday nights. And our fifth and sixth football will be playing on Thursday nights as well. Other fall program will be volleyball and. Sorry to say hockey's right around the board. So we'll be getting the ice ready. That came out in August 13th, where you had to do some maintenance to it. But we'll be ready to have it ready for the Warhawks by September 1st. So hockey's right around the corner as well. One thing that we are going to start, our Sunday nights, we had a basketball program that we did for intermurals for the high school team. We're actually going to extend that out to have Sunday night intermurals throughout the year. So we're going to do everything from frisbee golf or ultimate frisbee out on the turf, coed volleyball. We just felt like we need to do something for the high school students that are not participating in varsity sports. Just to get them out on Sunday night, mental health wise too, just to get them active and everything. So actually the Cardinal Pride isn't wanting to help us out with that. They want to see where our financials are at. And maybe they'll help subsidize some of the costs for those students. When we look at the pool, we had a little bit of a rocky start with with the water and everything, but it turned around. The rain didn't help us in June that much. So the average for us was about 192 per day. But when it gets hot like July was, we go up to 285. So in the pool, we closing down this Thursday. We've been kind of judging it with with August, but when we should close. Just because once really the high school sports start, it gets to be more difficult for staffing. So we do adjust hours that way. But the numbers aren't there as much in August. So.
What's what's gonna end up happening with the second slide?
That will all get redone this fall. We've contracted with a company that will come in and get both sides ready to go. Is what the community center has still offered many community based programs. One thing that she's done new this year is trips. So she's had a game or a Twins game go down and she's got a state fair one going. Fortunately, she does have a Vikings game going on. So they're all getting filled up and she's asking to see if she can actually get a second one for the state fair. So the facilities is going good. If you can see on the chart that we gave you with the rock with Robins Island, the shelters are busy constantly. So it's a great asset that we have these facilities for people to use for rentals. As far as with the Trailhead project, we did meet with the bike community. We're just finalizing the quote for that. So hopefully that can come in September. So you guys can look at what the price of that will be and the ultimate plan for that area. Working with the DNR on fishing platforms, those will go out by what they call is the jetty where they shoot the fireworks off. Basically, there'll be concrete pads that people will be able to utilize those if they're even on a wheelchair. So we're going to utilize that back area by shelter number two for more of a handicap spot so people can get out there and get fishing that way. So we met with the DNR and public works out there and they have money for it. So I think it should be a pretty much a turnkey operation. Sperry Pickleball Courts are finished. Civic Center roof is now finished and the playground at Valleyburg Park will start in late September. And just want to say that the destination playground will be closed for maintenance September 9th through the 13th.
Any questions for Rob?
Thank you, Rob.
Next, we'll hear from Christopher Corbett, Planning and Development.
Mayor, members of the council, if you guessed that I was going to talk to you about the comprehensive plan, you're correct. And so I want to speak to you about with Wilmer, it is our comprehensive plan effort that we have started. We're as well on its way. I just want to remind you all that on June 17th, you all approved. SRF for us to hire SRF consulting to assist us. And since then, the department has been very busy. Completed, hosted and participated or attended over nine events already. And we have done an open house at the library for the day and the evening session. We attended pop up events at Rockin Robbins, both on the 30th and August 6th. And then the county fair as well. We were there getting input and what people will want to see in the city within 20 years. And that was on August 9th. We hosted two in person public meetings back at the library on August 8th where we focused on mobility. And that was day session started at 11:30 and the evening session started at 5:30. And then on August 12th, we had an open space and recreational topic as well that we hosted at the library. Attendance has been. Attended. People have shown up. But what I would really need and appreciate from you all is this is your document that is being created for you all to make decisions in the future. So if you all can attend the next two or one of the two and spread that to all of your constituents as well. To attend August 26, 2024 at the library, we're going to talk about economic opportunities. And the day session starts at 11:30 AM and the evening session starts at 5:30. And on August 29th, we'll end our public meetings back at the library. We'll be focusing on land use and housing for both the day, the day session at 11:30 and the evening session at 5:30. We have another event Pablo alluded to this, but on September 14th, we'll be. At welcoming week. So downtown, making sure that we're engaging with the public and hearing from people on what they want from the city. And what they imagine how they can, how the city can support them as well. So if you have not done so, here's a QR code to take your surveys. There's five total surveys online. You can go to Wilmer MN.gov to our website. And a pop up comes up on the homepage. Just click that and it'll take you straight to our surveys. If not, you can always scan this. Paper copies are available at city hall. So if you know anyone who needs a paper copy and not feel that comfortable doing it online, I'll be happy to provide them there as well as the library. Just giving you a list of all of the events that has taken place and the upcoming ones as well. I also want to stress that it takes a lot to put on a workshop. And to do two or two of them in one day, that's a lot. And the department is really working hard on getting the word out. And so you'll see on social media, we're posing questions about where is it difficult to get around throughout the city? And we're engaging that way. We have really done everything that we could to get engagement and to have people come out. So it's really important again that this document is done with Wilmer. It is done to make sure that we have a guiding document that leads us for the next 20 years or so. Policy decisions are being made, capital improvements are being made as well. And making sure that we have one document that is the moving forward. So one document, multiple plans are inside of this document too. At the same time, we're doing safe streets for all and we're doing a pedestrian and trail plan too. Those two will be appendixes of the comprehensive plan and adopted at a later date too. I just wanted to show you a few pictures. I am very appreciative of Mr. O'Brien for coming and working the booth at. Unpronouncing him, but working the booth at Rockin Robbins. The mayor was in attendance for our open house event. You can tell that we have a city of Wilmer tent. So if you see the blue, the gold W on a blue tent, please stop by. We have a really neat way of doing it. And there's a picture at the top left of the screen. But you know, we have a canvas board where people are just signing their name. You know, we're talking to everyone who stops by the tent. We are going throughout events to talk to people. But one of my favorite stories is that for whatever reason, this board, this canvas really attracted a lot of youth. And there was an eight year old. Kid that came up to the booth and said, well, what am I signing for? And so I told him, I gave him my spiel of what a comprehensive plan is. And I said, so how old would he be in 20 years? He said 28. And I said, well, this plan is with you and mine that within 20 years, you can have a say in the future. And I said, see now, isn't that cool? And he replied to me, not only is it cool, it's smart. And I would agree with him. So. Your, your attendance at the next two meetings is really important. And again, this is a document that we need to get completed and make sure that we are doing a lot of engagement. So it's August 26th and 29th. Land use, that's the entire thing of a comprehensive plan to make sure that we yield a future land use map. And economic opportunities. So figuring out what programs and resources the city can provide neighbors. Throughout the city to make sure that they're, they're a part of economic development too. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have. The survey close on September 30th. And the PowerPoint presentation for all four of the sessions will be uploaded to our webpage.
Any questions for Christopher? Thank you, Christopher.
Okay, thank you so much. And I look forward to seeing you all on August 26th and August 29th.
No pressure. Do we have any community pride?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned.